Madam Clerk? I think you're on mute.
I don't think everybody's back yet.
No.
How you doing? Brenna?
Hold on one second. Trustee Ewen, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Reese?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee Brown? Trustee Brown? Trustee Handy?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Weinstein?
I'm here.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Bonilla, we have a quorum and I will go ahead and share the flag.
Thank you. We will open session. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our April 7 regular trustee meeting. The meeting has been called to order at 6:24 PM and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Karen Weinstein.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
To the republic which stands. One nation under God.
Under God.
With liberty and justice for all. Did I get that right?
You did, thank you.
Yes.
We will go ahead and move to item 2.4 and report on action taken in closed session. Madam Vice President? We can't hear you.
No actions to report from closed session.
Thank you. We will move to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Trustee Withrow and a second by?
Karen.
Trustee Weinstein, thank you. Roll call please.
Madam President, could we move item 8.1 from consent to action? That's the personnel items.
Moving 8.1 to action.
Thank you.
And agenda item 9.4, Madam President, has been removed from the agenda. Consider approval of resolution number 1920-49 designating public works as essential.
Thank you. 9.4 has been removed from the agenda. Thank you. Any other changes?
Yes, I'd like to move 4.1 from consent calendar to the action.
4.1. Thank you. Any other changes? So we have 8.1 and 4.1. Madam Clerk, move to action and 9.4 has been removed from the agenda. Can we do roll call?
Thank you. Student trustee Contreras? Student trustee Contreras? Student trustee Stanley? Student trustee Stanley? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown? Trustee Meredith Brown? I'll get back to her. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzales Ewen?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. And let me come back to the student trustees. Are any of the student trustees present? Student trustee Contreras? Student trustee Stanley? And is trustee Brown? In the room? No? Okay. Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So I seem to be having some issues on my own. Madam Clerk?
I should not be sharing my screen with anyone, and so I want to make sure that it's not showing up at your end. No, I can just see your video, but I cannot see your screen. You're not sharing your screen.
Okay. Let's go ahead and go to item 2.6, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Moved by trustee Witro and a second by?
Second.
By trustee Gonzalez Ewen, and I will ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Do I have student trustee Contreras here? Student trustee Stanley? Trustee Witro?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown? She is present. I believe she's having some issues with her microphone, so we'll get that squared away. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Weinstein? I'll come back to trustee Weinstein. Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Bonilla?
Thank you. We'll move to item 2.7, associated student government reports. Do we have our students here?
Laney College is here.
Hello, Laney.
Thank you. Go ahead with your report.
Okay, let me first off by saying hello, everybody. I know this pandemic is holding everybody down, but stay strong. Stay strong. My name is Armani Trailer. I'm the vice president of the ASLC of Laney. My report is that me and another student, one of my senators, attended a general assembly. I was really into it this year. I was one of the first run-up for student president of community college, almost won, but hopefully next year. The assembly was really good. We have over 200 students attended online. We was talking about getting more students, more funding for this pandemic right now, and they're trying to approve it. Second thing is Laney College had a virtual town hall meeting on Monday, April 6th. I heard it was really, really good. I didn't get to attend, but I had classes online. And associated student lectures are still going on. It will be, I heard, we are standing to April 17th, and on a ballot this year will be the AC change deal. Hopefully, we can get that approved. And one more thing, we are, the Office of Student Life in APAS will be providing virtual webinar on the US Census, Sanus webinar, I hope I said that right, to more help students with that. We're offline people and getting stuff like that. That is my report.
Thank you. Do we have any other students? If there are no other students, we will move to classified Senate report.
A text asking her, can I speak?
April?
Yes.
Hi, did you want to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, are you trying to speak under student report?
Um, well, I'm a student, and I have a question. I have a very, no, a concern.
Okay.
A very important concern.
Okay, so you can go ahead and send me a private message on Zoom, okay? We are at the identity center report.
But I cannot speak.
Did you want to speak under public comment?
Yes, under public comments.
Okay, so let's message each other on that because we're not on that area yet, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead. Sorry about that, Donald.
No, no problem. I just didn't know if it was about the Senate's turn or not. Thank you, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Stanback-Straub, presidents and members of the audience. As many of you know, this is the new new with faculty starting up this past Monday with remote teaching. Since March, faculty have been on a journey collectively stepping up to address the planning and prepping issues in order to transition to teaching and learning. We are now at that time and place where the rubber hits the road. We're going to be hearing from not only our faculty, but students and classified professionals about how it is going. For lab classes that were held yesterday or today, we will see how our remote teaching efforts are going. As we think about how the new software that's coming soon could help us improve it even more. Some of the faculty still need training on some of those software, and we have yet to receive it. Getting our students onto Zoom and other software or onto Canvas is not simple. It will become apparent rather quickly how their familiarity and access to technology will influence their learning. I know we purchased 9,000 Chromebooks, and that 100,000, I don't know if that 100,000, 1,000,000 will be arriving soon. I don't know if they've, if our warehouse have received them yet. Once they're here, how soon will the district be able to identify student needs, plans for them, and then respond to them? We know they, we know that the process and protocol for low-mouthed this technology will be a very big undertaking. This need for technology is one of the various issues that I think that the district needs to do. I wish there was collaboration and consultation with the faculty in order to get a sense of the issue. I heard that the district was using a student survey that had about 100 respondents, which included questions on the community, computing needs and internet needs. But I think that there needs to obviously be more to identify what those needs are. Students deserve our care and thoughtful consideration. I can say that the lack of consultation on these various academic and planning matters has resulted in what I would call, I would characterize as distrust and frustration from faculty about how this emergency command center operates. Orders are transmitted, as we understand it, to presidents and vice chancellors who in turn take them to their administration.
Shut the fuck up!
And the attempt to mandate a communication plan that is consistent that they're... The common question I received from the past few weeks has been, can you bring this up to the emergency committee? So we're really concerned about how this lack of consultation has been going on. And I really want us to try to see how we can collaborate more with the administration on the various issues that have been, that we've been confronted with. Lastly, I want to talk about communication. Our chancellor has been very tenacious in trying to change our ways of communicating. She has challenged people when they are saying something inappropriate or, as it's termed, toxic. The problem isn't her challenging anybody, it's how she does it. Faculty have been commenting to the Senate what they feel is the kind of bullying, an assertion of power of the chancellor over faculty. And there's been at least four incidences that I have witnessed in terms of this behavior. I strongly believe that this toxic culture our chancellor speaks of, she also needs to model it. When people go low, I hope our chancellor goes high. Michelle Obama's famous quote resonates with me as I reflect on our situation. We implore the chancellor to make change by going higher to challenge this toxicity. The academic Senate, which is not simply to be consulted on academic professional matters, we want to collaborate with chancellors and administrators. And so finally, given that the May revise by the governor will likely show a loss in tax revenue, and given that a recession will be likely, we can only hope that more students will choose to come to Calhoun. So we hope for a large part of the reason they decide to attend our college campuses is because of the excellence they see modeled here. And so we stand ready to collaborate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Did we, do we also have classified Senate?
No, trustee Bonilla, we do not have a classified Senate.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that, and thank you to Donald Moore for those comments. We will now move into public communication.
Trustee Bonilla? Can I just make a little announcement to everyone? I am, I do have control of everyone's mic, so if there is a question, the chat is available only for, to participate with chat with myself, the host. So if anyone would like to raise their hand or would like to send me a message on something to speak about, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and we will move to public communication, and VP Reese, do you have any public speakers?
We have 26 public speakers, and the limit is three minutes for each speaker, just as a reminder. We'll start with the first three. Andrew Park, Aleny Gastis, Jamil Tier. Andrew, are you in the room? Andrew Park?
Yeah, just give me one second to unmute him.
Of course, of course.
Okay, Mr. Park, you're unmuted.
Ah, okay, hi. Thank you. Thank you, trustees and representatives. Please allow me a little time to share an email I received last week. I think it went out to all faculty. The subject reads, "Faculty, where are you? Student survey results say they haven't heard from instructors." And the email begins, "Dear faculty, too many students have not heard from you." Reading this email, you do think that the survey results say that faculty haven't been reaching out to the students, but when you look at the details of the results, it says the exact opposite of that message. The survey results say, I'm just quoting in part, 56% of the students say that they heard from all their instructors. I want you to just imagine that a student taking five classes or maybe even three classes, a part-time student, hearing from all their instructors. What it takes on our end, what percentage of instructors have to reach out to students, so that over half the students, 56%, say that they heard from all the instructors. And when you dig deeper into the survey result, additional 29% say that they heard from at least one instructor. So of all the students, only 15% didn't say that they heard from at least one instructor. And, and what this is showing is that huge majority, most of us faculty have reached out to students in the last three weeks, during the spring break and while we are, most of us are busy switching to the online teaching modality. This is a huge accomplishment that should have been praised and encouraged, not be sent on, not be sent what we were sent. And this is a time for us to be kind, and even if we were doing something wrong, I think this was a time to be gentle and forgiving, not be sending scolding messages. And I'm frankly not sure what to say at this point. Two weeks ago, I spoke asking the district leadership to collaborate with us, not to fight us, not to... So at this point, I'm not even angry anymore. I'm just disappointed. Thank you.
Okay, and trustee Reese, Aleny, Aleny Gastis is succeeding her time to Chris Wydenbach. So the next person is, I believe Jamil Tier is running late, so the speaker after that is Speaker Jennifer Shonosky.
Santay?
I'm not, I'm not gonna bring you.
Hi. Okay. Sorry, children. Good evening, good evening. Hopefully, I can get through this and not get interrupted. I'm glad to see so many people here tonight. I'm glad to see so many people here healthy and active, and so many in the Bay Area continuing to shelter in place, so that hopefully we can see the end of this pandemic sooner rather than later. I'm not glad, however, that I am before you tonight to deliver the particular comments that I have to make. I am now closing out my third year as PFT president and my eighth year in leadership at the PFT. And most of that time has been marked by a productive relationship with most of our administration. Sometimes we work together to change leadership. Sometimes we work together to fix policies. Sometimes we've disagreed vehemently in negotiations, but we have always communicated, and we've eventually found ways to work together. I don't feel like that's any longer true. And while I'm certain that the district will blame that breakdown on us, and maybe me particularly, the plain and simple facts of what's happening right now tell a very different story. PFT was forced to file an amended unfair labor practice charge a few, I'm sorry, PFT filed an unfair labor practice charge a few weeks ago in response to the district's unilateral decision to cancel classes for two weeks. And while the district has repeatedly claimed that these cancellations are not subject to our collective bargaining agreement, the contract says differently. And I quote, "Except for error or inadvertence, no class shall be canceled after the first census." It's pretty clear. Today, we were forced to file an amended charge because the district has repudiated its duty to negotiate or recognize PFT, and that the district is now in flagrant disregard of its obligations under the EERA, which are owed to PFT and owed to the faculty in this district. In the last several weeks, there have been so many issues that faculty are facing and that need to be negotiated. PFT has reached out multiple times to try to do just that, and we are being ignored. Emails sent out to vice chancellors and chancellors, people on the negotiating team are... Emails sent out to vice chancellors and chancellors, people on the negotiating team, are routinely ignored. A partial list includes items like the faculty listserv, which we no longer have access to, investigations that called our chief negotiator as a witness and made a bunch of illegal claims, requests to negotiate over evaluations, questions about makeup hours for instruction, questions about faculty supplies, agreements on how to conduct negotiations. The list goes on. And I will say, we did get an email this afternoon about negotiating over evaluations, so I'll correct that a little bit. I realize that it might feel inconvenient and time-consuming to have to negotiate with a bargaining unit. And in a crisis, it's often tempting to plow ahead and not have to pause and do that. But based on what we're seeing, right, there are problems that we can help solve, that we want to help solve. And so putting on the brakes and negotiating with faculty is the right thing to do, but also the smarter thing to do. To disenfranchise faculty is morally wrong, but it's also illegal. Administrative members of the district negotiating team are formerly faculty. There are a couple of administrators, you know, who were formerly faculty and part of various unions. One of them was even a member of their executive council at that faculty union. I am therefore confident that all of them know what our rights are and why it's important that everyone honor those rights. In this crisis, we need to come together, and that's what we keep hearing. We're in this together, time after time, from place in place. But the district's actions belie that sentiment. The district's behavior divides us by ignoring our legal authority to negotiate contractual issues, removing our ability to freely communicate at a time when it's more important than ever, and pushing forward with policies and initiatives that do not consider the faculty charged with educating and serving our students. All of us should be focusing on how to serve our students. We should not be spending our time and money fighting each other. I invite the district, again, to set up a meeting with PFT leadership with terms that both sides can agree to, to discuss all of the very issues that need our attention. And I do have a couple of people that are ceding their time to me, so don't worry, I'm going over, but I know that. I'll give you their names in just a minute. I'd like to, that concludes my general comments for tonight, but I would like to finish up by recognizing the passing of Joe Doyle today. Joe was an instructor at Berkeley City College for 22 years. He was an instructor in multimedia, and he was a PFT representative for at least five years. He was a PFT rep when I started on the executive council. Joe was always a fearless fighter for workers of every, you know, every worker anywhere. He had joined us at a number of actions and picket lines, right up until the end, right up until, you know, just a couple months ago. Joe always held me accountable and pushed me to do more and be more, and he will be, he will be missed by all of us. So I want to just take a moment and recognize Joe. Thank you. I'll text Brenda the people that ceded their time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Chris Widenbach, and Chris, you have an extra three minutes because Aleny Gassistis has ceded her time.
Thank you. I hadn't heard about Joe Doyle, and that is a, that's a crusher. I really respected Joe. He talked, he talked straight. He understood comments and he told it like it is. And he was a gentleman. And I just hope all the people active in the PFT, if you knew, if you knew him, I hope you follow his example.
Looks like he froze.
Yeah. Should, should we go back to him, Brenda?
Yeah. Yes, we'll come, we'll come back to him.
Okay. Ngaiem Ty, Leslie Blackie, William Lepowski are the next three. Ngaiem Ty, Leslie Blackie, William Lepowski.
Hi, this is Niam Ty. I cede my time to Jennifer Shonoski.
Okay, thank you. Leslie Blackie, and William Lepowski, please.
Hello, Leslie, I'm Leslie Blakey. I am from Laney College. I am the chair of the Laney CTE Advisory Committee, and I am also co-chair of the district CTE Committee. And I'm very concerned with this shut off of the FAS. The ability to communicate across the Laney campus is very important for the CTE programs because we have CTE departments and programs all across in every single division. So it's not just one division. So it's, it's very important that we're able to send out information to make sure that we get it to all of the members, not only the department chairs, but also adjuncts that are working very hard, particularly in this time when we have been, over the past few weeks, asked for a lot of details and a lot of decision-making in very difficult times. We understand, right? We are in shelter in place, and how do we switch our education modalities to remote learning? Some can do this quite easily. Some of our programs have more of a lecture-based orientation, so that's a little easier. But when we're talking about lab skills or hands-on skills, that is quite a challenge. And we have had good meetings with district administration, listening to our concerns, particularly in dealing with capstone classes and essential services, and I've really appreciated that. But as part of those conversations, we've been asked to generate data pretty quickly. And without having a listserv, it gets very difficult to make sure that you've contacted everybody. I mean, we've been asked for information at 5:00 PM for an 8:00 AM by the next morning, right? So that has been quite difficult. And as part of the district CTE committee, again, we want to make sure that we are getting the information out to all of the district CTE programs. And again, it's not just in individual CTE divisions. So it has been a real hindrance to not have that faculty listserv. And I'm just very concerned about how we can continue delivering education, bringing up the concerns of the CTE programs, particularly since so many of them are actually part of the essential services that right now are needing workers to be put in to the workforce or continuing in the workforce. And we have very specialized difficulties with how do we switch over to virtual learning? I don't think many of us would be very happy if you went into an operating room and the nurses and the doctors had all had only simulations on how they learned to do operations. Or if you had someone who had only ever looked at a virtual simulation on how to unplug your sink, and you need your sink so that you can wash your hands to prevent contracting COVID-19. So I just wanted to say that I'm just concerned about our ability to communicate across all of the district and specifically as well as in Laney CTE programs. So I wanted to speak to both those issues. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mr. William Lepowski.
Hi, my name is Bill Lepowski. I teach math at Laney. I was hired as a full-timer in 1969. This is my 51st year here. And Nikki and Bill Withrow and Linda, good to see you guys, haven't seen you in a while. I'd like to make four points. First, I'm outraged at the district's behavior in taking away the FAS listservs. It seems the chancellor thinks there's too much vitriol in the emails. Well, there isn't. But it seems there's, there's a lot of destructive negativity coming from the district toward faculty and staff, and I don't like it. Second, it seems they think there are too many Girl Scout cookie solicitations. In the last 15 years, because I keep all the email, there's one reference to Girl Scout cookies six years ago. A beloved employee died, a college president informed everyone, and a grieving coworker of his wrote that he was so caring, he'd even let her know if some Girl Scout he knew had cookies to sell. One Girl Scout cookie message in 15 years? And that's why management is shutting down our listservs? It seems to me that Peralta's management is learning from the White House and trafficking in alternative facts. Third, based on management's recent messages, to me, it appears that they want to start what I'll call management's war against Lepowski's calendars. For decades, I've been sharing those calendars with my colleagues who tell me they are invaluable. This reminds me of management's war against Lepowski's statistics textbook that they started about 20 years ago. Linda, Nikki, and Bill probably remember. That war lasted about four years until a new chancellor wrote me an apology on behalf of the district. Having to fight back for years before defeating management, I couldn't make major improvements in our students' education. I think management is now starting down that same misguided path with regard to my calendars. Fourth and last, a high-level district manager last week wrote a rude and improper email to my colleague Fred Borgoin when he expressed his frustration with management's actions regarding my calendars. It really bothers me when a manager is gratuitously rude. I lived through it at Laney. Thank you.
Okay, we have our next three speakers. Thank you, William. Merrill Siegel, Kimberly King, Miriam Zamora Cantor.
Who's the next one you said? Trustee Reese, who was the next one on your list?
Merrill Siegel, Kimberly King, Miriam Zamora Cantor. Do we have those three? Merrill Siegel, Kimberly King, Miriam Zamora Cantor.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry, I'm trying to unmute. Hi, Brenda.
Hi. Go ahead, we can hear you.
Oh, terrific, great, thank you. I hope everyone's doing okay. And I wanted to talk about timing and time, and this is important, an important time. Timing is everything. So I often think about this hypothetical. After applying for the same job over a period of 20 years and finally getting it, you can't take it because it's wrong timing. And also imagine looking for that partner, that special person over a lifetime, only to see 32 years down the road that that person, who you thought was the special one is, but it's too late, the person's dead and gone or married. And so it goes, Chancellor Stanbach, Stroud, and Peralta trustees. This is a special time in history. It's remarkable. And I want to make sure to thank you for steering the helm. At this time, when we have a pandemic, people are dying and our students are suffering. And also teachers are going through a lot, too. Many of the union members called up our union membership, and we learned how hard they're struggling with not only family responsibilities, but getting their classes online. So the, I wanted to talk about the timing of the chancellor's decision to end free speech at Peralta. These are free messages between faculty, staff, and administration along the four disparate colleges separated by freeways and factories. It's really bad timing, really bad timing. This is a pandemic. This is a time where we can't even go outside. We can't even go to Alameda for a meeting. So I want to just talk about the bad timing. On Friday morning, I was zooming in on a curriculum committee meeting at Laney, and, you know, we have four screens opened up when you're on a curriculum committee, you know, there's a lot of things you're looking at. And the chair of the committee couldn't send out a message she needed to send out. It was like, what? And then, that was disconcerting, and we're working hard and trying to get all the curriculum through. But it was also disconcerting that that, those whole three weeks, we're working and I'm working and I'm reading messages and thinking, should I do this? Should I do that? Synchronous, asynchronous, how should I do the class? And I was getting great information from faculty and staff all around Peralta. There was a cute little picture sent out for Zoom, and I said, oh yeah, I'm gonna put that on my Zoom, and all these things. And then suddenly, on Friday, shut down. And I was thinking, what? And the time of the pandemic, we can't even communicate with each other? Whoa. So with all due respect, I know that the chancellor had some really important thoughts when, when this decision about how communication can, should occur at a college. I respect those ideas, but the timing's bad and it's really not a good time. So why don't we take it off the shelf and go back to it and, and get the union and the Senate involved, and let's think about a way to make things better. But right now, the timing's bad. Thank you, and be well and be safe, everybody.
Kimberly King next?
Hi. Hi, Board of Trustees. I'm really disappointed that I have to come and talk about this today. About two things I wanted to talk about. I'm Kimberly King, I'm a psychology faculty at Laney. I'm the co-coordinator of the Omoja Black Student Success Program at Laney, and I'm also the vice president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, the faculty union. First, about students. I wanted to urge, today, the Laney Senate passed a motion that we urge the Board of Trustees and the chancellor to give a refund of student fees to students who drop their classes, like the majority of the other colleges in the area and around the country are doing. It's very disturbing that we live in a place with one of the highest rents in the country. We have some of the poorest students in the country. Many of our students are housing insecure. Many of our students work in industries where they're not able to work right now, and yet we are not giving a refund. My understanding is we're being held harmless by the district, the, I mean, by the, by the state. The state chancellor's office has said that we can give a refund, so I urge the Peralta District to refund the money to students who dropped their classes during a global pandemic. Second, First Amendment of the Constitution. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise of the re, thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of people to peacefully assemble. or the right of people to peacefully assemble and petition their government for redress of grievances. That's the First Amendment of the Constitution. I noticed, you guys, there was a big flag on the screen, and we did the pledge of allegiance at the beginning. Can we at least basically respect the Constitution of the United States? I can't say how disappointed I am with the direction that the chancellor is taking us. I kind of like Andrew said, I don't even know what to say. The fact that Dr. Siri Brown would send an email like that when I know how much she cares about the faculty. She is a faculty member. To me, that's the influence of the chancellor, that's all I can think of. The Senate just reported a lack of consultation. I know as PFT Vice President that there is a lack, a disregard of our rights as a collective bargaining unit. These are serious issues of shared governance and collective bargaining. Chancellor Stanbeck Stroud is ignoring the important aspects of democracy in a college environment. I'm deeply concerned of the direction to censor faculty and staff voices as represented by the end of the faculty listserv. It was a way that we built community. It was a way that we shared information. It was a way that we expressed ourselves. Sometimes we shared information about political aspects of what was going on in the campus. And that's fine, that is the purpose of the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America. As Merrill said, this is such a stressful time. Why? I just, I don't understand this. This is, I just feel like there's hatred or something towards faculty and staff. It doesn't make any sense. Several times, as I'm trying to teach the first online classes I've ever taught, I thought, oh, I wish I could send out a letter, something on FAS to ask my faculty friends how to do this or how to do that. I couldn't do that. Saturday was the assassination of Martin Luther King. I often send out things related to social justice. I wanted to send something out about that, could I? No. This is a stressful time, as I said, and we need each other. Faculty need each other. And we need to be able to reach out to each other. So I'm just shocked. People send things there. Every time I post something on FAS, I get several emails thanking me for sending information about professional development or other current events, the Poor People's Campaign, et cetera. I just am shocked at this approach, and I plead with the Board of Trustees. I plead with you to please direct the chancellor to honor free speech, faculty rights. All of this serves our community. We need to be able to survive. That's what we're doing now, we're trying to survive. I can't believe we've gotten to this low point in district attack of faculty. This is not a business. This is a college, a community college in Oakland, California. Shared governance and collective bargaining are values, policies, and laws that matter. Board of Trustees, we, the faculty, need you. We need you to defend us. And more importantly, we need you to defend the values of collective bargaining, democracy, community, and shared governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, Merrill. Before we go to Miriam, can we go to the two students that would like to speak first? And then we'll go back to you, Miriam, and then we'll go to Chris Widenbach once again. So the two students are Max Frank and April. April. April.
April Kohler?
Yes. Is it my turn?
Yes, it is, go ahead.
Thank you so much. First of all, my name is April Kohler, and I'm an excellent student with the determination to be on the front line in allied health. And I'm here because I have a deep concern for myself and for my other fellow students. As you know, to become a nurse, a physician assistant, or even a doctor, the programs are very competitive. And they require non-virtual labs. I have two questions and one comment. My two questions are, can you promise us that these virtual labs that are being imposed on us now will be accepted by these programs? And my second question is, if they are accepted, will we be put at a disadvantage when we are compared to others who have already taken these courses? For example, in the previous semester or in the future? If no one can promise us this, then why should we be penalized with an EW on our transcript if we are forced to withdraw? And lastly, why should we have to pay a second time when we did everything correctly? And it's only the condition of life that has put us into this situation? Thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you so much for all your time and effort. We do appreciate it, and we do realize that you must make tough decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, and we actually have one more student who'd like to speak. Israel Kazan?
Hi, so since Max Frankie was first, I would defer to him. Might that be possible?
You know, I don't think he is in the room still.
Okay, for sure, so I'll go ahead. Okay. Hello, good evening, everyone, this is Israel Kazan, ASEOA precedent. So the reason why I didn't make the student reports was due to me thinking that the meeting was at seven PM instead of six PM. And luckily, a student sent me the Zoom link, and I'm here again. Because the ones that I had, I wasn't able to locate. Okay, so anyhow, reports. So I am amazed by the student leadership at the State Student Senate of California Community Colleges. Because in the past three, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we all had met via Zoom and collaborated to identify our priorities as to what we are going to advocate on. And I am grateful for faculty and staff who have been working since spring break was moved and when classes were canceled. So the transition as of now, I can say is smooth for me, but for other people, for other students, I do know that there's a huge majority of our students who do not have access to the internet, who do not have access to laptops. And I do know that the district has ordered nine thousand Chromebooks, and it's currently backordered. So there is some grace and patience that is needed. And hearing the public comments earlier with the FAS being dismantled and severed, I do not know what had cost that. But speaking on to that, I do firmly, strongly advocate that please, please, please work on communicating with each other, knowing that we're at a pandemic, this is unprecedented, no one knows what everyone's doing. Just got to hear from each other. Got to hear from the faculty, what is it they need to teach their students better? And echoing what the student prior me had said, can there be some assurance that the programs that they cannot take right now, the classes they cannot take right now, can how can we work about that, around that? So lots of questions being asked. And yes, let's reinforce communication. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Israel. Can we go to Miriam Zamora Cantor and Chris Widenbach, please? And I'm assuming Max Frankie is still not in the room? Okay, if not, let's go to Miriam and Chris.
I believe Miriam isn't here, so we'll go back to Chris.
Hello again. What I was mentioning earlier was the incredible level of irony of what's essentially a message from to the faculty and college administrators and classified staff and everyone else who works all around the district, that we can't handle communication? That we're not, we're somehow communicating wrongly with this tool that we know as the FAS email? And thus, we must be controlled by not being allowed to use that tool? I would just ask everyone attending to consider the quality and the ethics of the communication that's been sent out by the Peralta District over the past month. Are these really the people who are teaching us about how to communicate properly? Really? These people? I will not take lessons from my inferiors when it comes to communication.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to Katie Carmichael, Anne McMurdo, Alex Madonick. Katie Carmichael? Anne McMurdo?
Katie Carmichael?
That was Katie.
Wait, where did you go my phone? They just called my name. Where did you go my phone? They just called my name. My phone, they just called my name.
We go back to Katie?
Yeah.
Katie Carmichael?
Hi, everyone, sorry. Bath time for my son, I secede my time.
To who are you seceding your time to, Katie? Okay, let's move on to Anne McMurdo, Alex Madonick.
Good evening. My name is Anne McMurdo. I'm a counselor at Laney College and a PFT campus co-chair. I'm also a taxpayer in Oakland. I've been attending board meetings regularly for the last several months and have thought many times about speaking. But I refrained. However, tonight, I feel compelled to speak about the district's new policy on email distribution. It seems both controlling and unnecessary. It also isn't currently working. Right now, as Merrill said, we need more communication, not less. District, colleges, and especially the PIOs need to focus on communication with students and potential students, not attempting to control faculty and staff communication. Although we receive a lot of emails, I think it's important for me to know about what's happening on various committees, of which I'm not a part. Things like the Health and Safety Committee, facilities, curriculum, and even the Classified Senate. This information allows me for what's going on and to do my job more successfully. The Counseling Department, categorical programs, transfer center, health and wellness, job placement, all send time-sensitive college-wide emails. They are relevant to all faculty and staff and to the students we serve. They are vital for counselors. Personally, I value hearing a variety of opinions, and I need to hear from people who know more than me about things like the district's budget. I have a degree in political science and believe, as a public institution, transparency and the free flow of information are important. On a lighter note, I hear Girl Scout cookies, as was mentioned, is an issue. Personally, I like Thin Mints and Samoas. But if I don't want to buy any, I know where the delete button is located. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Alex Madonick, Sabrina Nelson, Thomas Renbarger. Alex M. Sabrina Nelson. Thomas Renbarger.
This is Sabrina Nelson, I previously ceded my time to Ms. Shinosky.
Okay. Alex Madonick and Thomas Renbarger.
It looks like Alex is no longer in the room, so we'll go to Thomas.
And then after Thomas, Eli LeBeau and Jeff Sensory.
Okay, thank you, Assembled Board of Trustees, Chancellor Stroud, assembled attendees. To start out, I would actually like to thank the Board of Trustees for approving Landhorde 840, the cannabis cultivation course. Somewhat ironically, given the shelter-in-place restrictions, we may now have to start working on a DE addendum for that course. But I do appreciate, you know, us being able to come together, you know, to develop innovative curriculum, so I thank you for that. The remainder of the time I will spend to address the, kind of the thing that everyone has been addressing, and since I've coming towards the end, maybe I'll try to be more summative in my remarks. So I would just echo several of the commenters on the fact that the FAS system is, this FAS listserv is a shared governance tool. And at the very least, if I had been consulted beforehand, I would have said that any faculty chair of a shared governance committee should be given that direct access because they have all faculty, administrative, and staff as their constituencies. We are a public institution of higher learning, so it is somewhat, you know, in doubt as to whether, you know, this really comports with the idea of a public institution in that sense. The transition was very abrupt, and that threw things into confusion. And it's still unclear who approves these emails. If you're not part of the charmed circle that can, you know, send out emails, sort of, you know, unfiltered through any sort of approval process. The last thing I would like to say is that is actually something that came from one of my part-time senators, which I will just read to you. I think three things could have happened before this action, the cancellation of the FAS listserv was taken. One, education about what FA is and how it should and should not be used, and best practices around its use. Two, monitoring. Two, monitoring. Empower someone to let people know when they are not following best practices or rules and to periodically remind the community about the rules. Three, individual sanctioning. If individuals consistently don't use it appropriately or grossly abuse it, rescind their individual ability to use it. The FAS addressed emails can be annoying, but I have rarely seen them abused. There is always a cost benefit to these issues, and I believe the costs of periodic annoyance and potential abuse are vastly outweighed by the benefits to the community of the free flow of information around issues which may merit a community and the value of community-sourced safety information." Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Eli LeBeau and Jeff Sensory.
Hello. I would like to cede my time to Jennifer Shinoski.
Thank you, Eli. Jeff Sensory, Anna Roy, Fred Burgoyne.
Let's see. Hello. Okay, good. Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, first hello to everybody there. I'm hoping that everybody remains safe and, and sound in these kind of uncertain times.
Shut the fuck up.
Hey. Also, I want to-
Shut the fuck up. No one cares, bro. Just get the fuck out of here, bro.
Oh, this is the bombing thing. Okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah, shut the fuck up.
Zoom bomb.
So we're good now? That was actually kind of interesting.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks. I wanted to, like, you know, express my condolences on the, on the passing of Joe Doyle. A man who was a pretty good example to me as, as a union activist. I know he, he definitely smacked me on the head once or twice, and it was, it was enlightening. And, yeah. I also want to say, you know, hello to everybody there, and I'm glad everybody's safe and sound. And also, you know, thank you to Brenda Martinez for her extreme patience in dealing with me. Sometimes I can be a little forthright. In any case, I, I wanted to say that, like, if we're talking about, like, you know, what's happening-
I think we lost you.
Yeah, I got muted again. Sorry about that. That these are kind of uncertain times and that I think we would all benefit from, you know, more, you know, involvement of faculty in, in what's happening, decision-making, discussions, and things of the like. I think that so many of the problems and confusion that faculty and the people with direct contact with students, you know, could be solved with faculty input and participation. There wouldn't, there would be fewer emails immediately followed by corrections. And the district will probably get a lot fewer calls and emails from concerned or frustrated faculty who have questions that district leaders just can't answer because they've either never been in a classroom or they've forgotten what it's like to be in one. With faculty input and participation, the questions that remain would likely go to the Senate or the Union, who in turn will be equipped to answer those questions, thus taking the weight off of the administration and allowing them to plow through the many issues that continue to sprout up in this new anxiety-ridden context. Instead, it seems that the district has chosen to double down on shutting off the Faculty Senate and the Faculty Union almost entirely in violation of the law and the contract. With the unfair labor practices filed by the state and the Union, filed with the state by the Union, and certainly more than one resolution being considered by the academic senates at the colleges and the district academic senate, it seems that at some point, there was a miscalculation as to the amount of self-respect faculty have and how seriously they take their jobs. Therefore, from where I sit, it seems that the next big problem that the district administration is going to face, probably in the near future, is an entire body of faculty who decides that it is in their best interest to return the exact amount of respect that the district administration has given them. As faculty, our integrity, our self-respect, and our love for our students runs deep, and we won't let go of our power to speak quite so easily. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anna Roy, Fred Burgoyne, Mary Sidio.
Hi, this is Anna Roy. I cede my time to Jennifer Shinoski.
Thank you, Anna. Fred Burgoyne, Mary Sidio, Richard Tholey.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you to Brenda for doing such a wonderful job today. I know it's difficult for you. Thank you, Cindy, for-
Pronouncing your name correctly?
Pronouncing my name correctly tonight. I appreciate that. You did, you did. That's right. I, what I'm going to say as under Laney Senate Faculty President, by the way, for the next Faculty Senate President for the next two months. After that, we have a new elected Faculty Senate President, that's Elaine Gastus. And you've heard from Leslie Blakely as well. She's going to be our Vice President. I want to talk about the Laney FAS issue as well for several reasons, because number one, I don't think the policy is fixing any problem. Number two, the way it was rolled out was a bit backwards and that we were prevented from using those listservs on Thursday afternoon, but the official announcement did not come until Friday. And that sounds like a short time, but let me tell you, it created havoc. Can't pronounce that word. It created a lot of trouble for our shared governance committees at Laney. Announcements could not be sent. Workshops that we absolutely need right now could not be shared or advertised. And we had a Senate meeting today and we violated the Brown Act because our announcement did not go out to the Laney community simply because the proper processes were not in place. So I question why you would want to roll out a policy without the proper procedures. And thirdly, communication about the policy has been less than ideal. There was a meeting on Friday, a half-hour meeting held by the district PIO where I personally felt like I could not speak and ask, and ask the questions that I wanted to. I asked a question, it was not answered, and then I was cut off. So that, that was not very good communication. And when we asked about a Brown Act, the answer we got was, oh, well, we don't know who's in charge yet. So that's, that was, communication was clunky, rollout was backwards, and it was not fixing any problem. Before I go, I would like to point everyone to three resolutions that the Laney Senate passed today. If you go to the Laney College website and look for Faculty Senate, you will see under Resolutions that we have three resolutions there. The full text is there. I don't want to read the whole thing. It takes too long. It addresses some of the things we've talked about tonight. Communication style from the chancellor in general. Yes, including vitriol that is thrown both ways. And refunds for our students who really, really need it. And I heard a student earlier say that she didn't want to have to pay for the same class twice. That seems absolutely right to me. Anyway, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Fred. Mary Sidio, Richard Tholey and Brock Drazen.
Hi. My name is Mary Sidio. And again, thank you for getting my name correct. Some people don't, but thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to this group. And I see this group as being people who have our students' backs and who have the faculty and staff's backs to, to make Peralta the best college. I've been at Merritt College since 2005, and I work in disability services. We call it Student Accessibility Services. And this change from face-to-face classes to online classes impacts our students greatly. And so we're trying to make it easy for them. And we try to share information with our colleagues across the campuses, and that makes it, that makes it hard when our, there's a stifling of our communication. I was kind of surprised about the way that it was rolled out. And I would expect that since there are a number of educators that are available, that we could have worked with the administration to be able to put, put some rules together that would make things work better, not just cut things off. Tom Renbarger already spoke to the issues that I think are very important. Number one, we should have some education about what are the rules, what are the guidelines, and the best practices for using such a communication tool. And let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, but if someone's not following the rules that they be addressed. And thirdly, if someone continues to not follow the rules, whether it be Girl Scout Cookies or Hemp or whatever, they should be able to cut off that person's rights to using the, the communication piece. So I'm here to just be a voice for not only my department, but for my students and also my fellow colleagues at these colleges, and I enjoy communicating with all of them. And it's, you know, here we are, stuck with a digital communication when we're so used to that face-to-face communication. To cut off more communication is, is kind of sad. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Let's go to Richard Tholey, Brock Drazen, and John Holmes.
Hi, good evening. If you look at the, the logo on my screen, it says at the very bottom, "Stronger Together." You know, that doesn't just go for local 1021 or SEIU members. You know, that goes to all of us as a community. You know, it doesn't serve, and I'm speaking in regards to the FAS. It doesn't serve to further silo us off into our communities, into our campuses, into our work sites. You know, we, we get through these hard times, even the good times, the vitriolic times, the vitriolic discourse, you know, all of that. You know, we, we do it with Peralta's best interests in mind, and we can only make it stronger together. Okay, and so I just wanted to start off with that. In my experience, in the few years that I've been here at Peralta, I can, I can see, in my experience and through all the various emails that I've read that, that have gone up through FAS, you know, it really facilitates communication on improving educational services. It's brought up a myriad of safety concerns that, that faculty and staff point out for not only ourselves, but for students. It really plugs us all into the communities that we work and live in. You know, we work here, we live, we live here. You know, we're part of the community. We're not just employees. You know, we're not just workers. You know, we, we share information about how we reach out into the communities and how we can interact in our communities, you know, via being employees, but also community members. You know, it's all showing we have Peralta's best interests in heart and mind. And at the risk of sounding vitriolic, you know, or, or having that type of discourse or perceived appearance of that, you know, I think it's helped oust or identify maybe people who didn't have Peralta's best interests in mind, you know. And, and I think, you know, we need to have those communications to keep us all healthy and, and stronger together. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Brock Drazen, John Holmes, Leslie Ryman.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for listening. I want to speak to the FAS listserv as Athletic Director at Merritt and Head Track Coach. And usually at this time of year, I'm sending out videos from meets to all of Merritt and the district. And I always find that allowing people to see the videos and reading about our students connects everyone, even if they can't come out in person to meet and watch our students. We've had great success as an athletic program, and we want to share those successes with our Merritt and Peralta community. When we set up the Steph Curry Select 30 Game at Merritt last summer, I was able to reach out to everyone at Merritt and the district, offer free tickets and organize the distribution. The FAS made that easy, and the event was a huge success that we all participated in. Also, as the Co-Chair of our Merritt College Facilities Committee, a member of the District Facilities Committee, and on College Council, the FAS is a great way to spread shared governance information campus-wide for those who can't get to the meetings. It's a clear communication opportunity that keeps people in the loop about what's happening on campus and at the district that may impact stakeholders. Open, as many have said here, open communication and sharing of information far and wide is integral to the success and accreditation of our colleges. More separation is just, it just doesn't make sense. And as Tom and Mary mentioned, there's less restrictive ways to address the issue of vitriol other than cutting off the whole FAS. A reinforcement of email etiquette and follow-up is, is an example. Lastly, just the fact that this issue is coming before the Board speaks of the type of miscommunication that leads to the very vitriol and confusion that nobody likes. I'm an optimist, and I believe instead of following the path of the current societal and political acrimony that as a district, we should be able to lead the way toward more appreciation, kindness, and grace in the face of disagreements when they come. And thank you.
Thank you, Brock. Let's move to John Holmes, Leslie Ryman, and John Beam.
Hello, am I on? I, huh, I'm wearing, I'm wearing something over my mouth, not for the purpose of keeping out coronavirus. Oh, it looks, well, it's supposed, it says censor, so since I can speak, I'm taking it off. My name is John Holmes. I teach history at Merritt College. And one of the things I teach history, and one of the things I teach in History 7A is the First Amendment and telling the students about it. So that's something I want to talk about, a little bit. Before I want to do that, there's a couple of things I want to mention. First of all, April Kohler's comments, "Nurses and nursing students are a precious resource for the Bay Area, for California, for America, and for the world. For them to be mistreated in any fashion at this point in time is absolutely outrageous." And so I seriously hope that what April had to say gets listened to. Now, as for this FAS shutdown, besides being against on general principles, as being against what America was supposedly founded to create, namely that First Amendment of the Constitution, also, it's pretty obvious from this discussion, from the things that everyone's been saying, that the practical results have, have been disastrous here. That simply for keeping the college running and keeping things going, having this abrupt clampdown on the FAS has interfered with the practical operation of the college. I particularly recall the remarks from the CTE Chairperson, which I'm particularly interested in because in my, in my capacity as a union representative, I've had an opportunity to speak to a welding instructor who doesn't know what's going on. And there's no way you can teach welding online. It's the ultimate hands-on job. And the fact is, part-timers like myself, not only do they not know what's going on for the fall, at this point, myself included, don't even have any idea what's going on for the summer. So there's an absolute lack of communication here and this FAS clampdown. Now, what is the purpose? I don't think the purpose was to avoid Girl Scout Cookies being distributed for the simple reason that Girl Scouts are currently to the shelter-in-place order, not going door-to-door selling cookies. We are in a crisis. We are here in, in the world. And in this situation, I don't think you're going to be seeing too many casual, useless communications on FAS, much less than in the past. I think the clampdown wasn't even a question of vitriol, although that happens, and as other speakers have spoken to, when there's a lack of communication, you get more vitriol. The real reason is a fear of criticism. And this is exactly the kind of time in which you have to listen to all voices so we can get through this crisis. uh, so we can get through this crisis, uh, well. So this is the worst possible time, uh, for this kind of a measure. Uh, and, uh, seriously, also, I recall what Merrill had to say. It's typically strange exactly now when those of us who aren't essential workers are sheltering in place. Uh, it's exactly now when we want to have the most open possible communications among ourselves for our sanity, if nothing else. And also, uh, to be able, as so many speakers have spoke to, to get the practical business of the college done. This measure is interfering with the practical business of the college, uh, and imposed without, of course, any negotiations. And the last thing I want to say is when I spoke to the board a couple of weeks ago, uh, I raised the question of extension of sick leave. Uh, we are in a situation which you, uh, in which the CSUs have extended sick leave, the UCs have extended, extended sick leave, uh, for those needing it due to, uh, people affected by coronavirus. And sooner or later, uh, sooner or later, given the large number of district employees, this is bound to come up. Uh, and nothing, to the best of my knowledge, has been done. And the union can, uh, and the union has been trying, our union, we have been trying to communicate, uh, with, uh, the administration around the question of extending sick leave and haven't heard a word. And this is, by the way, also, we all need to be united. I particularly appreciate the, uh, the words of our representative from the SEIU, uh, representing white-collar workers, uh, as well you have the blue-collar workers, the operating engineers and other unionists. And they're the people who are essential workers. And, uh, you have to ask, uh, are sufficient, uh, safety and protective equipment being provided for them so that they don't get sick? Uh, and I hope that is, all I can say is I hope that is being done. But the absence of wide communication, how can we know? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Leslie Ryman and John Beam, our last two speakers for the evening.
All right, good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. You all look great. Glad to be back and seeing you. Makes me happy to see your beautiful faces. I want to back up what, um, uh, Mr. John Holmes, and, um, most importantly, what one of our students, somebody that we service, we service our students, right? That's our role, is to provide the services to our students and back them up at all times. So my question is as follows, just as April Kohler mentioned. I have, I teach anatomy and, um, in majors biology courses. So students in my, in our physiology, anatomy, microbiology, chemistry classes, um, that are taking these courses as prerequisites, they are moving into highly competitive professional careers in the allied health. They are, in fact, the heroes of tomorrow. So my question is, will these courses containing a virtual laboratory component be accepted by the various programs students are applying to in the allied health? That's one question. How can we reassert our students that they will be able to transfer those courses? I think that, I really feel that we, our students deserve to know, one way or another. We have to be honest to them, and I implore you and beg you to be honest to them and tell them, one way or another. Okay? If, if these courses are accepted, will our current students be put at a disadvantage when they are compared to students from other semesters as they apply to these programs? Right? Compared to those students that are dealing with the pandemic? I really feel our students deserve a straight answer. I am currently receiving emails from students that want to take my course in the summer, asking me, me, if my course is going to be something that they can use as they apply in the, if it's going to be accepted to their, uh, physician assistant program. How can I answer that question when I do not know? Right? So I implore the board to provide us with that information so that we know what to tell our students. Right? Um, and so I invited to insist our students, to refund them as needed. Um, and I had an idea. I thought, okay, the student gets an EW. Let's say that we allow them to drop, or the student drops a course. I am happy to provide a couple of weeks, have the students return to class. They say they, they take the course, they say they finished the course. Let's say they can't do the AW, pardon me. Okay, and they finish the course. How about providing the students who, to return and gain the skills that they missed out on because of the fact that the course was a, had a virtual lab component? Virtual laboratories is not as easy as you may think. All right, I've been working since the spring break, and I've enjoyed the whole process, but, and, and, um, I'm happy to say that things are rolling in, but it's very challenging. So I invited to provide assistance to our students, to support them, and please allow us faculty to communicate with one another. Okay? Thank you. That's all I wanted to say, and have a happy day.
Thank you, Leslie. We have, um, two other speakers, John Beam, and we're going to go back to Miriam Zamora Cantor.
Thanks, Brenda. Thanks for taking care of me, putting me at the back. So I want to start out by saying, um, hello to everybody. My name is John Beam. I'm the Athletic Director at Laney College, and I hope that all of you are safe and doing well. My, my biggest concern is over the last three weeks, I've been reaching out to our student athletes at Laney. And my concern is that they don't have the technology to be able to be successful in this new age of what we've been thrust into for taking classes online. Many do not have reliable, um, internet access, um, don't have, do not have laptops or hotspots, many of those things. And what, what, how are we addressing those issues? Um, I talked to my colleagues at San Jose City, um, San Mateo, uh, Napa, and Marin. They've been able to give out, you know, multiple laptops, uh, iPads, hotspots, but yet we haven't yet. What is the timeline for this to happen? The other piece is that as I reach out to all our, my students, and I'm sure it's for everyone, who's worried about them right now? They, they're going through so much turmoil at home, just like we are, but they have even more barriers in front of them. Some have to take care of siblings now, some are having to work or not work and not bringing money. And what, what is the outreach? And you may have already done this, and I don't know about it, haven't seen it, but how are we looking out for the mental health of our students right now? Uh, what are we doing for that? We've been pretty fortunate at Laney. We've had, um, a social worker do an internship with us this fall, and she's going to continue it now. And she's been reaching out to our student athletes and talking to them. Many students will not reach out on their own. They're, they're not, they're, they're afraid to say they need help at a lot of times. Um, our food pantry that we've had, how is that now? We have, we have food insecurities. What are we doing to address those issues? And I think we've, we've missed out of our, you know, we've forgotten these students. They're so vulnerable. We have the digital divide. But this, this problem that's going on, which is none of our own making, by no means. Right? But it's going to create more barriers for our students. And I, and I think we're missing the point of reaching out to them. You know, in the last three weeks, I learned how to Zoom. I did a YouTube channel. And that's not easy, trust me. I've been teaching 40 years. This is all new to me. But I had so much support to try to get it through. But what about the people that don't have support at home? What happens to them? Do they just get frustrated and walk away? You know, what is happening? I know that I had on Monday, three different people text me saying that they couldn't get on their Zoom with their math teacher. Fortunately, I was able to reach out to their math teacher. He resent links, he resent other resources for them to get, but I think we're missing out. Also, I went through my rosters last week and sent messages to all my students. But how do I know they actually got them through their Laney emails? I'm not sure they, they get it, they, they, um, respond to it, or they have the password to get in. So I'm not sure if they're getting the messages I'm sending. Um, the only way I know that they do truly is when I talk to them, uh, by phone or I text them, and I get responses. But I think we need to find a way to reach out to all of our students in some way to make sure they're okay and that they're able to succeed in this new, challenging time right now. So that's kind of what my, my statement is today, is that we need to remember what we're here for, and that's our students. And I think that they are the most vulnerable right now with all the insecurities, and we need to find ways to bridge those insecurities. So I thank you all, and, uh, I hope you all stay safe because I know it's, it's difficult out there. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for that. Miriam Zamora Cantor, who are our last speaker for the evening.
I'm speaking about FAS and the recent, uh, decision to remove faculty access to FAS. What does it stand for? Faculty, Administrators, and Students. Together with our classified brothers and sisters, we are community. Community that's healthy needs to be transparent and collaborative. A unilateral decision to remove access to the FAS emails to censor communication is neither transparent or collaborative. I'm asking the board to consider their roles as trustees and the, the community's need to communicate with itself and within our, within our system. In the 30 years that I have been at one role or another within Peralta, we have always had access to the FAS system of communicating by email. To have it suddenly removed, especially in a crisis time, anytime, but especially in this time when we need communication and we need transparency, I think it's bad timing and it's bad policy. If we are a community, we need to be able to communicate with each other. If we are collaborative, we need to be able to communicate with each other. If we are healthy, we need the communication. That's what I wanted to say this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miriam. Um, a thank you once again to all the speakers that came forth tonight to bring your comments. And Madam President, that is the end of our public comments.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yes, I also want to thank all the speakers this evening for sharing their concerns. Um, and just being present. It's, it's really good to see all of your faces, um, as we continue through this very difficult, difficult time. Um, I want to also, um, I, I wanted to make sure that we didn't miss any previous speakers. Was I, was it explained to me that the classified senate was not present? Is that true? Thumbs up is good if that was true. Okay. Um, we'll move into the Chancellor's report. Chancellor?
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Chair and members of the board, uh, members of the dais, and, um, members in the audience. Um, I have a couple of things that I would like to report on. There were quite a, um, a few comments on the, um, issues of the FAS and the communication. Uh, I'd be glad to provide a lot more detailed information, but I just want to correct some, um, what may be some misunderstandings. Uh, one, um, I, there actually are some good suggestions that I, uh, heard in these, uh, presentations, and, uh, will be following up, um, uh, with regard to many of those suggestions. I just want to be clear that, uh, any faculty member, uh, classified staff, professional, uh, any person working in the district still has the ability to communicate throughout the district. And that ability is by sending a communication to, uh, announcement@peralta.edu. We also set up additional, and, and with regard to that, um, yes, that, um, as has been the practice, the communications that are sent to announcement@peralta.edu are reviewed and distributed. They are reviewed, um, to make sure that they, uh, comport with the board policies and administrative procedures, your policies on, um, communication, telecommunication as well as stability. They are reviewed, um, to make sure that they, uh, do not violate federal and state, uh, laws. They are reviewed, for an example, people don't have the right, they have, uh, the right to free speech, they don't have the right to hate speech, for an example. Uh, and then they are disseminated. Uh, if some, uh, an announcement comes through, and as a matter of fact, in the course of this process, we had an announcement that came through that was, uh, critical, quite critical of, um, a decision, of the decision, quite critical of me personally. Um, but, um, nothing was, uh, inappropriate about the announcement, and they were disseminated, it was disseminated. So it is not a case of not disseminating, uh, criticism. The other thing is that we did, we set up additional opportunities for communication. Uh, faculty at the respective college sites, classified staff at the respective college sites can send, um, communications to their entire colleges by sending it to their, um, the, uh, setup, uh, email address, which is the colleges' announcement. So you might have BCC announcement@peralta.edu. That goes to their PIO, it goes to their president. Um, and the colleges are developing their, are putting out their processes for, uh, distributing the announcements. But the announcements, again, are reviewed for board policy, administrative procedures, and to ensure that, um, it's appropriate, appropriate speech. We also, uh, set up additional tools, uh, which is, um, they have access to Yammer. The distinction between the two additional tools that we have is that it is an opt-in, uh, opportunity. So faculty and staff can send out a message to everybody who wants to hear from them. So for an example, um, during the course of this conversation, we heard, we, I heard, for an example, from a staff member that said, uh, I don't want all that stuff in my email. It usually is, you know, stuff that's not related to, uh, to us. It clogs up the email, and they said, uh, to me, um, so I would not, I would not have that. But if somebody who does want all that stuff in their email, they would be able to opt-in and get everything. Um, so there are several tools, announcement opportunities that, um, are set up. As well, we wanted to make sure that the labor units had the opportunity to talk to their memberships and constituents, that the academic senates could talk to their memberships, and the classified tense senates could talk to their memberships. So the labor unit, uh, president, the grievance offices, offices of each of the colleges, um, has the ability to use the FAS lists and send a message to every one of their members throughout the district. Um, the, uh, classified union, SEIU, and the local, uh, 39 have the ability to send out a message throughout the district to every one of their members. The district academic senate can send a mess, president can send a message to every faculty member, full and part-time, in the entire district. The college academic senates can send a message to all of the faculty that are, uh, full and part-time at their particular colleges. So we set up lots of opportunities for people to be able to send out the messages. I heard in the course of the, um, presentations, some suggestions about additional, uh, people, like the governance chairs, uh, and those of, those, uh, suggestions, we want to take into consideration and be able to, uh, incorporate suggestions so that we can improve it. I think that there are some, also some just criticisms, uh, around, um, the opportunity for us to do a lot more, uh, training and sharing of information, uh, so that, uh, people will feel comfortable and will have, will, will know, you know, how to use the different tools that we, um, that are available. Um, I think, uh, so we'll be, we'll be doing a lot more work on that. Um, a, a lot more work on that to, uh, make sure, um, that we can do that. I also want to, um, just, I'm going to close these comments. I don't think, I'm, I, I don't think that there's probably much that I would be able to say to satisfy some of the, uh, concerns that are expressed, uh, particularly in light of the way in which, um, people are viewing their, um, the treatment, the inability to send out unfettered, uh, messages throughout is seen as a censorship. I just want to let the board know that, um, the, the management of email permissions is something that, uh, is very typical throughout, uh, the system. the management of email permissions is something that is very typical throughout the system. We did do some work to find out what are other colleges doing, other districts doing. And we did learn that most of them overwhelmingly have certain types of restrictions, certain types of mechanisms for people to be able to send out all campus messages and all district messages. And there are, there were a handful that we did learn that did not. And the CEOs and the PIOs who responded, responded with that they did not have that and it causes tremendous problems. So that was not, this was not something that just kind of came out of the blue. The other thing is that I absolutely agree that this is a time that people need to be able to communicate. And so I am hopeful that we can do a much better job in terms of making sure people know about and have all the tools that they need to be able to communicate. And then finally, I'm going to make this last comment about this. And it is just part of the comment, part of the message that I try to, you know, have us be very careful with ourselves because I don't necessarily know whether it's through intent or benign neglect, but the effect can be the same. You don't, you don't come necessarily to this situation if you don't want criticism. Because, yeah, with my, my experience in the district is that, you know, people are free, will freely let you know what they think about things. And many times are not necessarily practicing what they're demanding, which is graciousness and kindness and respect. But that's okay. That's part of being in institutions and societies where people have different perspectives and the right to think differently than others. That's okay. But it is not the first time in my life, being an African-American woman in these United States, that I have been told by someone who happens to be a white male that I am inferior. And I don't necessarily think that it come, that it's intended to come across in that way, but it's what's called a universal concept of white supremacy. And I think we have to be very careful because I don't necessarily believe that someone intentionally would make that statement. However, if you look at the, as someone said earlier, optics of it, the very notion of the criticism is against the administration. Dr. Regina Stanbex Stroud, African-American woman. Dilal Warden J.D., African-American man. Chanel Whitaker, African-American woman. Lee Sata, Asian male, Asian-American male. Mark Johnson, white male. Dr. Tamile Gilkerson, Asian Pacific Islander, Filipino woman, American woman. Dr. David Johnson, African-American male. Dr. Tim Karas, white male. Dr. Debbie Budd, white female. So we have a very diverse administration, district administration, as it is disparagingly put sometimes, that is overwhelmingly people of color. And so I just want us to be careful that we're not clumsy with our lack of critical consciousness and racial literacy, to stand up and to say that you will not be told to do something by people who clearly, you're inferior. So I'll close my comments on that and I'll go to other parts of the report. And I welcome and appreciate the commitment and the passion that the faculty and staff who spoke today came with. Okay, I welcome that, actually. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to get better and do better by Peralta. And I appreciate the willingness for everyone to kind of take a look at theirselves and their part in it and continue to support this district and these colleges and be in the great places that they are. The next part of the report that I would like to go to is just a yay announcement on the bond rating report. We got the Fitch Bond Rating Report, which is a double A bond rating. That means we have a high-grade bond rating. That is actually just some very needed good news, especially as you start to consider the issuance of the bonds. I prepared a report and will beg your forgiveness for it being so basic, but it might be a, it might be a reflection of the level of, the level of discussion that I needed to be able to have around, you know, bonds and bond ratings and what it means to us. But in the end, it's good news. The second thing I'd like to go to is the report on the accreditation. You know that we have to give a report to the Accreditation Commission in November. And it is a report on the different things that we've done in response to their concerns that ended up placing the four colleges on probation. So I prepared for you a report to let you know a little bit of the thinking about how we were approaching it. I backed out a timeline to get a board report, to get the report to accreditation by November 1, and to have the board be able to act on it in October, and to have the board be able to have a first reading in September, to have an open forum in the district. And we realized that people will be just getting back for the fall to have an open forum, hopefully it's face-to-face and doesn't have to be virtual, in September, to be able to disseminate a draft in early September, to be able to engage the boards to get feedback as we create the drafts in late October, to be able to engage the governance groups when they return in mid-August and September, to be able to disseminate a draft to the, to all of the employees in mid-August. And we recognize that people will be just getting back. But the great news will be that when we hold the forum and when we're gathering the information, it will be in response to a draft that we can hopefully improve with the feedback. We have a meeting with Dr. Stephanie Droker on April 20. And we hope to get out of that meeting and understanding of what the Accrediting Commission is looking for in this report because we are a little bit at the disadvantage of, when you write an ICER, you know specifically what standards you're speaking to. In writing this report, they identified the reasons that the colleges are on probation and they identified reasons that were around processes, structural deficit, resolving the OPEB liability or smoothing that out. And so those are, many of those are things that are not done at the colleges. So we intend on addressing those issues at the district level, but engaging the governance groups to be able to give that, to give the feedback and input on that. So we are going to be working with putting together the people who will write the report. And it's a lot of quote-unquote "district finance" that has to be put together. And then we'll be getting started on that in, actually, this week is where we start to try to put the teams together to get the initial work, writing done, and then start to engage people throughout. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a report on how we're thinking about it and what has to happen. I think Dr. Droker's meeting with us is going to be very helpful and get us focused. I do think that one of the big issues that happened with the accreditation, the five-year sustainability report, is that even that was not in a traditional accreditation structure. And though it was structured in a way that, you know, they had to ask us to structure it, I think that the people who were reading it, the commissioners, were not accustomed to reading that structure. They were accustomed to reading the ICERS and they were asking, they were, when they gave us feedback, they mentioned that the structure was hard to follow. So, so we'll, we'll get that addressed as well. And then the other thing that I do want to say is just in terms of the pandemic response, there are, there are a lot of things that are still in the works.
Just a couple minutes, I'll be-
Just a couple minutes, we'll tell you when.
Brenda, you may want to mute everybody. Can you hear me? Brenda, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then the last thing is I just want to say a little bit about the pandemic response. So we have a more strict shelter-in-place order that was recently released and that put even more limitations on what we could do. And it put some limitations on, and requirements on social distancing protocols and some requirements on notices that went on buildings. We complied with that, created the notices, put the notices on the buildings throughout the district and at all of the college campuses. And we'll continue to work on, we're working with faculty and staff right now because there are some programs where they actually do need to be in their lab spaces or they need to be in their, in, have a physical, be in physical, face-to-face instruction. And so the faculty have been working with V.C. Brown in figuring out how they're going to approach that and set up times for them to be able to be safely in the building using social distancing protocol that takes into consideration the square footage, the rooms they're in, including the bathrooms that are on the floors that have to, that have to be available. The other thing is that the colleges are having conversations about graduation. So the student life activities directors have been collaborating across the district. They're looking at doing a virtual graduation. And the virtual graduation is, you know, a process that, you know, companies, you have the students take a pictures, the students send in, we send in that information, they get a chance to make a statement, we record speeches, and then a presentation is created. So it's not actually an event. We did a survey as well and we learned that some students, you know, want to have a regular graduation so they would rather for it to be postponed and do it in December. Some students said they would participate in the, in the virtual graduation, which means that they would send in the information. It's not an actual event you go to. And so we're trying to figure that out, we're costing it out. We think that we want to at least do something so people have a commemoration and a keepsake, but it doesn't mean that it's mutually exclusive. So colleges may want to end up doing a postponed graduation at the end of December as well. I've asked the colleges to work together as a district because I want to make sure that the board has a similar opportunity and experience across the district. So, so we'll let you know more about that. We had some people ask about questions about things like grading and emergency, emergency funds, and are we going to give refunds and, you know, you know, are we going to have enough technology, etc. There still continues to be a number of issues that we just continue to go after and try to address and work with different people in order to get it done. I will tell you that on the emergency funds, we've done quite a bit of work in trying to amass and pull together the different opportunities for students. The CARES Act will release quite a bit of money to the four colleges. And it has some requirements that, you know, 50% of the money be used for students' emergency needs. It'll be in the context of this crisis, but also will be resources that will be available, quite frankly, to students through, whether there was a pandemic or not. And so we, we don't know yet the exact figure that we will get. And we don't know yet how the feds will release it and, you know, what we would get. But the colleges are starting to have their conversations now, likely working these types of things through processes like their financial aid processes and that type of stuff. There are also, some colleges have smaller funds where they have, they're repurposing some of their funds that are, where it's, where it is allowed. These are smaller funds that they're getting, you know, little $500 helps out to students. And they are putting, putting together their processes and their announcements. We also have learned from the state that is, it's okay for us to use some portions of what's called the SEA funds, and that's what used to be called like student equity and the matriculation-type funds. They're all consolidated now into one categorical, one categorical block. And these SEA funds, we've agreed across the district to set aside some of those funds to use for student emergencies and then use other, you know, in other words, if we normally would use SEA funds to pay staffing, we set aside a certain amount for student emergencies and then use some salary savings from other areas to cover the staffing that would have been in SEA. So student equity and the other programs don't lose anything necessarily. It's just us trying to repurpose the monies or salary savings that money exists. So a lot of different things are going on and we're trying to organize it to get the communications out and to get the processes in place so students can access it. And then in terms of the refunds, we are having conversations about the refunds. We are checking with other districts as well. Some districts are giving refunds. For an example, the parking refund, they are giving half of the parking money, 50% of the parking money. Other districts said they figured out how many days were left in the semester and they prorated it to give them money back because they can no longer use that service. Some, some people said that they were crediting it for the next semester. And so we were asked, we asked finance to run all those different simulations. So for an example, if we were to give back the parking monies, it might have something like a $40,000 impact. But if we give credit for the next semester, that could have as much as a $75,000 impact. So, and the reality is the students may need that, that money right, right then. It equates to about, it's coming out to be about, you know, $10 or $15 per student, but that might make a, that ass ward or that gets it, but that might make a big difference to a student at this time. In terms of whether they get a refund for withdrawing, we're also running those scenarios also. That has a significantly higher impact, financial impact. And the refund for withdrawal, so the student mentioned that they got a EW, they would get an EW on the transcript. The EW on the transcript is something that, that the Chancellor's office did to make sure that students didn't suffer any negative consequence as a result of having to withdraw. And if a student has to withdraw, it could be because of EW, then it could mean that they could get a refund back. It, it depends on, if the student doesn't withdraw, then we wouldn't necessarily give a refund because we are making arrangements for the student to be able to complete the classes. But if the student, if the class is canceled because they can't, it's impossible to complete it. Or if the class is canceled, I mean, if the student withdraws because even if the class goes on, they can't do it, they can't complete it, then we're considering the possibilities of giving them back the refund. So that's stuff that we are trying to go through the right processes and get all of the right information and not make the, not make the decision based on pieces of information. But it's definitely something that we're trying to consider to get addressed. So I hope that that's helpful information to you to get you kind of informed about the different types of things that we are addressing in the, in the, in the response to the pandemic. And then finally, I will say that we have formed a regional group of the CEOs. and many of the, uh, the district administration are participating in their counterpart, um, meetings across the state for some, for me in the region, for us to be able to share information and share good practices. And with that, I'd like to go to the college reports. Um, you have the reports in your, in the board agenda. Um, but I'd like to ask for each of the presidents to perhaps highlight uh, something that they would really be interested in making sure they got a chance to, to share with you. And, um, can I start with the College of Alameda, please?
Sorry, just getting me unmuted there. Hello, everyone. Um, greetings, um, from the Valley of the Heart's Delight, um, AKA San Jose. Um, glad to see everyone tonight. Um, I just want to give a shout out to two things. Um, at COA, there's more things in the board report, of course, but, um, two highlights. One is to our department chair of our aviation program, Hoy Co. Um, he was interviewed, um, on ABC News Seven last Friday, April 3rd, about the impact of grounding, um, aircraft right now. Because, um, which I learned by reading the article is, or listening to him, is grounding an aircraft isn't the same as just parking your car in the garage for a couple of weeks. Um, there's some other stuff that has to happen. Um, so that makes, um, aviation mechanics imperative and that's his program. So it's really wonderful to have someone seen as a regional, um, asset who gets asked questions like this from our news, um, programs. Um, and we're so proud to have Hoy as a member of our COA faculty and family. And then second, a kind of a group shout out to our student services and counseling and advising. Um, they all came together, the, you know, counselors, the staff and the administrators to get the online counseling up and running for our students right now as they're taking their courses. Then also on top of the online counseling opportunity they have, um, they've put a widget on our website in the counseling areas and advising areas that allow brief chat features. So if you had a quick advising or counseling question, you could just chat with the person. I was going to try it out today, but I thought, um, I wouldn't impersonate a student, so I, um, I'll do secret shopping later. Uh, but I'm really proud of them, um, getting that up and running and being so student-focused and so student-forward. So, um, that's my, um, brief report tonight, um, and I will see you in a couple of weeks again. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Keres. Uh, may I go, uh, now to, uh, Berkeley City College?
Thank you Chancellor and Board of Trustees and entire Peralta Community College District, um, community. Uh, it is my pleasure to be here this, this evening and I wanted to start with our Berkeley City College Report, uh, congratulating three of our faculty members. Um, Dr. Thomas Keys, Dr. Alejandro Goberperez and Dr. Laura Roberto have all received the Mellon ACLS Community College Faculty Fellowship. This fellowship will allow them, um, field research time and reassign time over the coming year to continue their research and bring that back to the college. Um, ACLS is the American College of Learned Society and has been in existence for over 45 years. This is a really huge honor for our faculty, for Berkeley City College and the entire Peralta community. So congratulations again to Tom, Alejandro and Laura. I also wanted to share that thanks to a previous grant that Berkeley City College received, we have had Chromebooks in our library for the past several years as a lending library. And we've been able to start lending those to our students. That's thanks to the great work of our, uh, Vice President of Student Services, Dr. Stacy Shears, Martine Delmuncha Flores, John Nguyen, Kai Ocasio-Paro, Josh Boatwright and the entire library team and our I T team who have tagged and tagged within the library our Chromebooks to start to distribute to our students. And then in the coming weeks and months, thanks so much to Chancellor Stanback Stroud and to our Vice Chancellor of Technology, um, Antoine Mahouli, uh, we will have up to 9,000 more Chromebooks and laptops coming. So we're really looking forward to that. Are distributing those now and making sure that our faculty, as students come back this week, continue their survey to ensure our students have the technology for the remote learning. I'd also like to share that it's been an extreme pleasure serving the district over the last three and a half months. As you know, I am retired and I did, uh, come to help out for the past, uh, few months, uh, while, uh, Dr. Stanback Stroud looked for a new president. And I am extremely happy with, um, the new selection of a Dr. and Helica Garcia, who will begin her leadership at Berkeley City College. You know, as I said, when I joined, Berkeley City College is absolutely my favorite job in education in my 33-year career. And coming back, it has absolutely shown me how fantastic it is. And it's still so exciting that Berkeley City College remains number one in the percent of transfers to U C Berkeley. So we are so thrilled with that out of the 114 colleges in the state. And in closing, I did want to say just a few more words about Joe Doyle, who passed away today from heart failure. He fell ill in January. Uh, many of us saw him at the hospital, uh, when he was there and then spoke with him, uh, recently. And without a doubt, Berkeley City College was his family. And, uh, when we went to visit, he said to the nurses, this is my college family. Um, you have heard that Joe worked, uh, in, at Berkeley City College for over 22 years as a full-time faculty member, but he was also an incredible and well-known artist. Um, he was known for his digital printmaking. And as you heard from some of the P F T, really his political and social statements. Um, from the burning refinery print that is on one of our floors in our building to photos he used to take of planes at the Naval Air Station. Um, he's always had something to say. And he most recently was so proud of his recent gallery, uh, show at St. Mary's College by Ann Rosenbloom. So I want to thank everyone who said such kind words about Joe. And I really want to thank, uh, the board for this evening when they, um, have a few moments of silence in honor of Joe Doyle. So thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Budd. Um, may I have, uh, Dr. Tamile Gilkison with Laney College give a report?
Tamile, you're.
You're muted, you're muted, Tamile.
Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor. Um, I apologize. I have a very unstable internet connection right now. So I've been struggling with that. So I want to thank you, Chancellor, for the opportunity to provide an update tonight on behalf of Laney College. I want to start my report, uh, trustees, um, by saying noting that I'll be speaking on things that aren't necessarily in the board report that I put in today. Um, but wanted you to know that I wanted to start by sharing a message of gratitude that I'm sure that you share with me. Um, and it's a message of gratitude to the team of classified professionals, faculty, student employees and administrators who've been compassionately focused on continuing our relentless commitment to high-quality, student-centered instruction and services. Our Laney College team has worked relentlessly to keep our clean move services, financial aid, welcome services, writing lab, tutoring, library admissions and our learning communities, to name a few, to remote formats. Our technology team has worked relentlessly to provide hands-on support to all employees um, and our students from help with laptops for employees and software programs. Um, and are beginning the efforts to work with I T professionals across the district to deploy and, and be ready, um, a series of Chromebooks that will be distributed beginning, um, next week. My thanks to Vu Fan, Roxana Post, Tuan Doan, Will Jones and Gerald Casey and led ably by our I T Director of Information Technology, Rupinder Batya. I also want to recognize the 370 faculty who have worked to learn new learning platforms, offered encouragement to their students and are continuing to convert class lessons and labs to remote modalities for over 719 sections that we offer at the college. I also want to thank, um, the management team at Laney who provide unparalleled support and have been patient with me and with each other as we do the best we can lead in the midst of this crisis. On Monday, we held a virtual student town hall with nearly 100 attendees to provide students with critical information on classes, remote services and on extensive question and answer session led ably by our Vice President of Student Services, Vicki Ferguson and our Director of Student Activities and Campus Life, Gary Aubrey, and a team of managers and faculty who provided encouragement and support. I was heartened by the way our team answered questions both verbally and on chat with speed and care. Dr. Mildred Lewis, our Dean of Enrollment Services, was the quickest there to offer clear answers and support on our chat function. Finally, I offer my gratitude to our students in the thousands who continue to rely on us and trust us to serve them with compassion and care. We stand in solidarity with communities that are united to combat racism and xenophobia. Uh, racism and hate are the true virus. Uh, and I've seen firsthand how Laney College community is working collaboratively to fight ignorance with education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Gilkison. Uh, and may I have, uh, Dr. David Johnson with Merritt College, please give a report?
That's me. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to give this report on behalf of Merritt College. I want to begin by saying that, um, I hope that everyone's well and your families are well and you're taking care of yourselves as we navigate this, uh, challenging time. Uh, I want to begin by saying on Friday, March 27th, our Associated Students of Merritt College and the Inner Club Council hosted a Zoom Town Meeting, a town hall meeting. Over 100, over 100 people participated in the town hall with our Executive Council led by Spencer Staggers Elmore, our Vice President, Mubarak Haruna, and our ICC Chair, Aziza Crowder, moderating the discussion. It was a great opportunity to have students, uh, ask questions and us provide answers regarding remote instruction and student support services. I'm also pleased to announce that the Merritt College Business Department Advisory Board is being reestablished. That same day, March 27th, they held their first planning meeting with 14, um, faculty and administrators present. Um, Cheryl Mayer of the Oakland Advisory Council is working with the committee to find, uh, support in digital, digital entrepreneurship. And Jason Holloway is working with faculty members and Ms. Kathy Mattis to support the Commercial Real Estate Alliance for Tomorrow's Employees or CREATE Fellows Program, which I know is near and dear to one of our trustees' heart, which is an initiative to prepare students to be job-ready for the real estate business. Um, I also have some information about some students, uh, which, which is, which is always my favorite part. I want to talk very briefly about four of our students. There are four members of our, uh, men's basketball team and very good news for all four. Um, Adam Sindalar, who's a transfer, uh, uh, a foreign exchange student from Spain, um, just got a scholarship to Florida National University in Miami. And he's going to be carrying a 3.1 GPA with him on a full ride to play basketball in Miami. So we're very proud of him. He's going to be on track to graduate in May. Devin Pierce, who is a local high school graduate, um, is also getting a scholarship. He's going to Pacific University in Oregon and he's also carrying a 3.1 GPA with him when he transfers. Brandon Manning, who's a co-captain and who was the Player of the Year in the first-team All-Conference in the Bay Valley. He is the first Merritt College basketball player in six years to earn a scholarship to a Division One school. He's going to South Carolina State. So we're very proud of him. And finally, Jared Bailey, who's the other Merritt co-captain, he has a 3.0 GPA and he has two offers, one from Montreat University in North Carolina and one from Diller University in Louisiana. And he's, he's weighing his options. So I'd like to congratulate them, Coach Derek Jones for his leadership. And I'm very proud of these young men as they move to continue their academic and athletic careers. And in closing, I just want to say that I'm very thankful for the support and the, um, collegiality and, um, collaborative, um, efforts of the faculty, staff and administration at Merritt, um, who are working together to, um, provide our students with the support that they need to, um, navigate this, the sea change that we're experiencing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Dr. Johnson. And, um, one of the things that, if I can just take a point of personal privilege before I close my remarks out, uh, two things. Um, one is, uh, in your onboard docs, um, trustees, you have a document that's called, I try to provide you with the collaboration, uh, timeline. And that is because, uh, as we are working with different faculty and staff, uh, we're having meetings with different faculty and staff throughout the district in order to, uh, make some of the decisions that we're, uh, making. And I asked the leadership to please provide that information to me, including how many people are involved in the discussions or the meeting or the presentation, et cetera. And I try to provide that to you weekly. So you'll notice that this week, um, from March 30th until April the 3rd, um, the, uh, administration in working on these issues had, has met with, um, and it's, it's a duplicated head accountant because sometimes some of the same people are in different meetings, but has met with over 600 faculty and staff. So I, and I gave you very specific information. Uh, for an example, people that participated in the virtual Flex Day or people that participated in a student services meeting where they're trying to figure out, you know, virtual counseling and, you know, different types of ways in which student service will be available to, um, students as they go through remote, remote instruction. Um, people that are participating in the, um, discussions that maintain dual enrollment and even, uh, the responses that we get back from surveys so that you can have an idea of the types of, uh, ways in which we try to communicate with people and get the, the information to inform the decisions and the ways in which we move forward. And I'll continue to add to that each time. So I know that you get a lot of, uh, comments about, uh, communication and collaboration, but, um, and, uh, clearly sometimes, uh, if the person that's making the comment is not part of the, that particular meeting, they may not be aware of those types of things. So I just wanted to make sure you have that background information. And then lastly, before I close my remarks, I would just like to take a point of personal privilege and thank, uh, Dr. Debbie Budd, uh, from the bottom of my heart for, um, being willing to, um, come and be a part of this executive leadership team and to step into it with the full force of, uh, advocacy. Uh, and quite frankly, the, um, the tenor of a very, uh, seasoned and competent and, um, established, uh, CEO, uh, former chancellor and, uh, then college president as she returned home to Berkeley City College. So from the bottom of my heart, I really want to thank you on behalf of this entire district, I'm sure. And I'm certain that the faculty, staff and students of Berkeley City College have a deep gratitude and appreciation as well. Thank you so much. And Madam Chair, with that, that's the end of my report.
Um, thank you for that, Chancellor. I will open it up to the trustees, um, for any questions, comments. And I'll ask, uh, Madam Clerk to assist since I cannot see or tell who's raised hands, um, to speak. Trustees? I believe you can unmute yourself if you'd like to say something. Trustee Weinstein? You have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, um, Chancellor. And actually, thank you to all the people who spoke up today. Um, I know the Chancellor and I have been going back and forth a little bit about this, um, shutting down of the fast listserv. And as she knows, that I'm, uh, passionately opposed to it. Um, and that I believe in general and free speech, um, and, uh, would like us to continue with this listserv. So I'd like to ask the Chancellor, given that you've heard so much and given that there, we are in the middle of a crisis, I wonder, um, Chancellor, if you would reconsider, um, this and put it on hold for a while and work together with the groups and see if something else can emerge.
Thank you for that question. What I am, uh, willing to do is to, uh, pay attention to the concerns and the complaints. What I am willing to do is to pay attention to the concerns and the complaints, make sure that the information gets out to make, for people to be able to know how they can do that communication, and make sure that the training takes place in order for people to be able to use the tools fully.
So are you talking about the new tools or the old tools?
I'm talking about the quote-unquote "new" tools because there are new distribution opportunities in terms of the colleges, and then the existing tools, which were the announcements that are available, have been available in the district all along. But it is not the, that every single person in the district would have, would be able to send a message out to every single person in the district across, across the district using what was traditionally known as the FAS list.
Okay, well, I'd like you to reconsider. And, and as I have said to you previously, if there is a lot of vitriol, I would like to be aware of that, that's going on online, but you know, actually in this country, there's a lot of hate speech that's protected. What we do is we try to educate people. We don't usually shut down the whole thing. We shut down the person, and that's usually through education and learning and communication. So I just would like you to think about that, and while I hear what you say, I would like you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Weinstein. Are there any other trustees? I can just take you one by one. Trustee Brown? Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez?
I'm here. I can unmute. It just takes a while to, it takes a while to unmute it.
Right.
From the time that I started Peralta, which has been 18 years, I have heard complaints from employees about the email system and how much they have to dig through to get to their work. It was nice, you have an orchestrated group of people who were like-minded who came in, and as you can hear from their comments, they had, some of them had part of the information. If I were there, I might be really upset at this point because they were given information that it's all shut down, but in reality, we all have a documentation of how it has been changed, what is available. A lot of their fears that they were speaking about, if they'd had the full information the Chancellor just gave, they would know that those were not even fears to have. We're not shutting down your ability to communicate. We're shutting down the ability for people to take advantage of a system. This has nothing to do with free speech. This is an educational institution. It's a way to communicate with each other. The people have behaved badly. People have been outright racist. And the thing that I found absolutely amazing with all of the speakers today, they spoke about Girl Scout cookies, but not one person addressed the racist comments and the mean spiritedness. I hear people talking about being collaborative and kind. This has not been anything that I've experienced in the past two years. The email is, it's outrageous. And some of the things that have come in there, I've just had to question whether the people were even not decompensated. That's how bad it was. So I know that our Chancellor looked at best practices. I know that no one else has that type of craziness going on. I think that what we're looking at is change, and people are not, they don't like change. I don't like change, but this is a change for the better. You're not losing anything other than what shouldn't be there in the first place, but everyone will have the ability to communicate if they want to. And it would just be nice if we didn't have to fight every battle because someone's going to say they're taking away free speech or whatever. You know that is not the case.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you. I'm not going to speak to the substance of the issue so much. I think people probably guessed my position on that, but as it's not an agendized item, really want to avoid engagement in the substance. But I would like to remind us as board that at our last board meeting, we passed a resolution authorizing the Chancellor to engage in emergency action, but the specific language of that resolution explicitly called for the district's commitment to working closely with all collective bargaining units, academic senators, classified senators, other appropriate constituencies, as it deals with the whole range of issues that we're dealing with. We're in a crisis situation right now, and one of the things that I did hear people talk about, and I'll just mention this in terms of the substance, is that we're in an era where easy communication across large constituency groups is critical. And as we deal with this crisis, I think it's just vital that we not act unilaterally, that we engage people who work in the district across many constituent groups in coming up with solutions to shared problems. Nobody likes being dictated to. Nobody likes being told what to do. Now, I understand that in some situations, you know, there isn't time. You just need to make some kind of action. But on this one, this looks like a sledgehammer trying to kill an ant. This just seems like incredible, an incredible overreaction to a relatively small problem. And the damage that is being done to the district morale through unilateral action here is exactly what this board told the administration not to do in the resolution that we passed last week or two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Brown? Trustee Withrow?
Am I off mute?
Yes.
My only comments are that the comments by the, and presentation by the Chancellor and our four college presidents, I thought were very good, very well spoken, and I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Is trustee Brown still with us?
Trustee Bonilla? Trustee Brown says that she's muted. I think Brenda needs to unmute her.
Yes. We'll wait a few seconds.
Okay, trustee Brown?
Trustee Brown?
Am I on?
You are.
Oh, great. I just heard the voice say I'm unmuted.
Okay.
So I wanted to extend a congratulations to the students at Merritt College that have found the success of these full scholarships. We don't know what the future will hold as we go through this pandemic period, but we do know that these students will carry with them their enthusiasm and their striving for excellence, and I think it's a wonderful thing that they have overcome challenges and difficulties because it's extremely competitive, and to rise to that level is wonderful. So I'm really pleased to hear these stories of success that our students are having, and also the successes that we're hearing from the Laney faculty and Laney campus, and the, and thank you, Dr. Budge, regarding your time keeping Berkeley City College on track and helping move forward in a critical time. Very much appreciative of College of Alameda also continuing with the continuity of education, and it is a very, I remember going to visit the Aviation Center there and the fact that the planes are now having a slowdown period is, I think, very concerning, but I'm sure that we'll recover from that as well. So I just want to thank the students and faculty and staff that have been continuing to work so hard and fulfill the educational mission through this difficult time.
Thank you. I believe I got all the trustees. It's so hard when I can't see all of your faces. So Chancellor, thank you for your report. College presidents always take my hat off to all of the work that you're doing. So absolutely wonderful. Great to hear your voices, see your faces, and learn about what you all have been doing during this trying transition in meeting the needs of students. Chancellor, the only piece I would, I would add on the communication piece on this FAS is I'm not 100% sure I understand what was and now what is. So what was the access prior to the communication model prior to removing FAS or limited? I don't know if it's been removed, if it's been limited, and it sounds like there are other tools. I heard some reference to Yamers. I heard, and I have no idea what that is and how it works. And so if there is a communication or a, something in writing that explains this communication piece to the board, I think that would be very helpful because right now I don't know what it is. And it's, so I think for clarity, I think the board needs more information in terms of what we had and then what we have, what those differences are.
Sure thing.
That would be very helpful. I'd like to go ahead and move forward. Our next item is 3.1 security presentation. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you. May I ask VC Sata to start the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chancellor. And if you would, Brenda, unmute Lieutenant Verbeck as well. I'd appreciate that. And then if you could set it up so I can share my screen. I've got the presentation here. All right. Can everybody see that? Okay, well, Madam President, Board President, Chancellor, members of the board, colleagues, and members of the public, one of the commitments that we made several months ago was to kind of keep you abreast of the security, overall security plan, and so this is kind of an intermediate presentation to let you know what we've been doing and some of the work of Lieutenant Verbeck and his team, and share with you as well next steps. So this evening, we plan to provide you with a few slides, just reminding you of what we shared with you back in June of 2019. The results actually of a survey that was taken in 2017, the results of which, it's my understanding, you have not seen, and some findings. Lieutenant Verbeck will speak to you a little bit about some of the changes he's made to his organization and his achievements. We'd like to share a few planning milestones and then talk about next steps. So back in June, we had, excuse me, shared with you that there were a couple of presentations made by both consulting firms as well as comparison to the Bay 10, other community colleges here, and these were some of the summary slides. Most have what was considered a hybrid model, which is a combination of internal and external police forces. The current security model here at Peralta Community College District consists of three parts. We have the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. We have the private security firm, used to be ABC Security. As you know, we had a change over in January to A1 Protective Services, and then augmented by campus safety aides who are students that are largely in the criminal
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Program of at Merritt College. Okay. Can you hear me?
Now, yes.
Okay. The various parts of the security organization provide different types of services, and we presented to you again in June what each of those groups does for the campus. And we provided with you kind of an overall cost of these services, and it's listed there. Okay, the second thing we wanted to present to you was the results of the 2017 survey. We actually had a significant number of respondents. We had 455 participants, and I've got three pages of slides here, kind of from highest percentage response to lowest. There's a couple of takeaways here that I'll go through with the findings. One of the things that I thought was interesting on this slide was that 85.27% reported that they felt either safe or somewhat safe on campus. And I think the two highest responses said, kind of reported back that they weren't really utilizing some of the tools that we provide as colleges. That was kind of interesting data. Kind of in the middle range, you know, between just over 54% of the respondents to 67%. Again, one of the notable takeaways is the second bullet there, just under 66% reported that they felt that the district cared about their safety. So that was positive. And then finally, kind of on the lower end in terms of responses, that they, it was clear that, you know, people weren't, or perhaps our department, DGS, hasn't reported or communicated as well as we should about what some of the procedures are. That second bullet there, only 50% reported that they knew what to do in the case of a lockdown. So there's clearly some room for improvement on the group, on our, on our side with regard to communication. So the findings here, again, emphasizing that most students did in fact feel safe on campus and that the district cared about their safety. They were not aware, however, of the enhanced security services provided, including some of the safety apps and escort services provided by our student aides. Students tended to just carry their own phones because it made them feel more comfortable. And many students did not participate in a series of listening sessions because they were not aware of it. It strikes me that both issues may indicate a lack of communication by DGS, also campus safety infrastructure, so we're going to have to think about how to improve that. And then finally, and something that is important to note is that the survey questions did not really address the underlying issue of the community's perception of law enforcement and whether officers were properly prepared for the cultural context in which they're working. We've got a presentation. So I'm going to pause there, and I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Verbeck, who has been hard on, working hard on the five specific items that you as a board
I think you're passing it over to me, but you're kind of cutting out there, so I'll just take over from there. So on Exhibit D of the five things you asked us to work on, we've completed all those. But what I want to touch base on real quick is, you're probably all wondering why I'm looking at it, why you're looking at a 2017 survey. We do that survey every two years. So in 2019, that survey was due again. We started working on it. Folks wanted to change a couple of the parameters in it. They wanted to know more about They wanted to know uh more about like gender, race, the the people that actually replying to the surveys. We didn't have that in the initial surveys. We're just trying to take surveys from uh faculty, staff and students. Um, but we, the group decided that we want to know a little bit more about each person that's taking the survey. Unfortunately, by the time we got it all squared away and uh, we're gonna put it into um, into a digital form to do it, the coronavirus has, uh, and we've kind of been uh behind the eight ball since. So once things resume, uh, whenever that is, the school resumes, we'll get back to that survey and you'll have a more current survey. Uh, but of the five things we did, just real quick, uh, the apprentice program, we've been working on that. Um, we've got a couple of people in our background process that were uh safety aides, um, a couple of folks from Margaret Dixon's classes that are also trying to get hired on our Sheriff's Department and different uh levels right now are in backgrounds. Um, we've been going to the courses, uh, and giving advice, giving uh help mentoring them. Um, when it comes to the community policing, uh, we started the Let's Talk program this past year. Um, that was taking off fairly well. We actually had a pretty large uh group planned. Again, coronavirus took that out as well. That was planned in February. Uh, we were not able to do that, but Let's Talk program is, we're reaching out to faculty, staff and students and getting feedback and we're um making some really good uh partnerships with a lot of the groups, the Black Student Union up at Merritt, um, another student union that just formed last year was uh Healthy Relationships. And uh, we've been working with those two unions uh specifically and trying to form bigger groups and getting all those campuses involved. And once school comes back in session, we will continue with that as well. Um, the dialogue, like I said, we've been going on campuses, uh, we've been participating in flex days, providing uh not only active shooter training, but active threat training and just talking to faculty. There's some faculty that are worried about if an incident happens, you know, what can we do? So we've been going through what you can do in your classroom to uh help yourself uh prepare if something like that should happen. Um, another topic that came up was cultural competency. Uh, myself and my sergeant, uh, Tony Bridges, went to a cultural competency course here in Oakland, um, back in February. Uh, we we brought all the information from that course back and then we taught our staff um the things that we learned out of that. And we're also um doing some more training on that aspect, um, as soon as we can get into something. As you well know, everything is shut down right now, even courses for law enforcement are shut down right now. Uh, so we're struggling a little bit with that. What we are still doing is in-house training with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. So uh, we all have de-escalation training this month. Um, that is something we do every uh three times a year. Uh, we do it at our range and we also do it in our um training program. So um, some folks were asking about our de-escalation. We we train in that three times a year and um, starting this month and going through uh the next two months, my entire staff will have gone through uh another de-escalation training. So that's kind of a little update of where we're at on that. If there's any questions I can answer, uh, I'll be happy to answer.
And we have a few more slides and we're of course happy to take your questions at the end. Uh, so some of the things we've done over the the previous year here, um, back in May, you did approve the one-year contract extension for the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. Um, you did ask us for, to include those five requirements, which Dr. uh, which uh Lieutenant Verbeck has just addressed. Um, I actually attended in June of twenty nineteen, an Occupy Oakland Community Forum, which featured an organization called Kahoots. And I followed up with Kahoots in July to better understand the program. Uh, Kahoots is a de-escalation program that's administered by the Eugene Police Department, which sends, rather than um post-trained officers as first responders, they have the option of sending uh folks who have a little bit more uh training in social services. And it is a program that is also been replicated here in the city by the Oakland Police Department. And I believe that uh the Alameda County Sheriff's Office is also looking into creating a similar program. So I've had some talks with Lieutenant Verbeck about how we might utilize those programs, particularly the Oakland Police Department. Lieutenant Verbeck, you want to share a little bit about that before I go on?
Yeah, sure. So um, I also looked into Kahoots uh at the request of VC Sata. And to to bring Kahoots here, uh, I do not believe is financially possible. Um, it it's a large organization that would actually have to move here, form a office building, form uh staff and and the the price that it would cost is uh probably a little more than anybody would want to spend. So I reached out to uh some folks I know over at Oakland and they have the basically the same unit that's out there and they offered us uh free of charge to use their unit whenever we need it. Um, what has been in the works with Alameda County is the same type of unit that's gonna be countywide. So um, they're gonna have multiple units out there and they're gonna be able to be utilized in Fremont and and Hayward and some of the various cities that also cannot afford to have a company like Kahoots come in and and work there. So right now, we're using Oakland, should we need them. Um, we have a rate Oakland's radio and we just dispatch them uh ourselves as as needed. Um, so I think that's a good thing for the campus. I think it's a good thing for the college district, um, and there's no cost involved, which is also a very good plus for you guys.
Great, thank you, Lieutenant Verbeck. So let's talk a little bit about next steps um coming up. Uh, I wanted to let, share with you that I have out, uh, done some outreach to the PAA leadership, uh, specifically Professor Lawrence Van Hook. Uh, we haven't had a chance to dialogue yet, but we've exchanged a few messages. Um, of course, this is April and we're giving you a presentation of our security milestones. Um, there again, I've mentioned that specifically Professor Van Hook, um, we want to reach out to him to gain some of his insights about what we might do to make a more effective plan. And again, this kind of addresses that last bullet a few slides back to sort of ensure that we're considering all aspects of what policing may look like for this community and specifically for this college or this uh district. Uh, I also wanted to share with you that I reached out to Lady College Dean of Educational Success, Diane Chang, to seek her input about the ROK program, uh, at the suggestion of President Tamile Cookerson, which is also known as the Restoring Our Communities program. And it's a program for formerly incarcerated students, again, to seek her input and their input into the plan. As you know, sometimes, um, you know, just the sight of uniformed officers can trigger a response that's not positive. And so we want to see if there's things that we can do to help mitigate that. Um, and I do think that there's awareness on Alameda County Sheriff's Team about that, so we're gonna work together and see if we can come up with something that addresses some of those concerns. Uh, finally, in May, uh, we're considering a second survey to the student community uh to again, seek input on the security plan. Uh, we plan to bring something to you in the May-June timeframe for a first read, for your input and comment. And finally, we'll be asking you to approve uh the contracts related to whatever plan we come up with, uh, which would be in the June twenty twenty, uh, one of those two board meetings. We're happy to take your questions.
Great, thank you, um, VC Sata and Lieutenant Verbeck. We'll open up for um comments from uh from the trustees. Um, let's see. Um, can we remove the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, I'm sorry, let me stop the show.
There we go, there we go. Okay, let's go ahead and um, I'll I'll go to Trustee Brown. Hopefully, we can unmute her.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. Thank you very much for the report, um, VC Sata and Lieutenant Verbeck. I have a question regarding the um, the name that the referral that I gave you, Chris Brown, who worked with the Contra Costa, um, uh, the Contra Costa Mental Health Agency that would, that had a similar program to Kahoots. Um, I'm wondering if there were some resources that were available that we were um, that were provided so that we could possibly find a way to um, to duplicate some of the services that uh were provided under the Kahoots program here on campus. And what I'm wondering is if some of the um discussions that we had early on were um part of the um, part of the review that you did to to uh, with regard to the security services. I am aware that those five um, require, those five issues that we had, I outlined or five items are are part of what you have reported on, but it um, I'm wondering about sort of our overall um request to look at the security services provided, look at the options that were available in the area and find out what the best um configuration was for our campuses. And part of that was going to be dialogue with students and um, part of that was, we had talked about setting those up. And that was in um, that was last spring, actually, so we have gone a few months and it appears that a lot of the work has been done internally and I think that that's great. You've been really busy, but the part of the overall objective was to have it be a community-involved process. And I'm wondering to what extent it has been more of an internal process that doesn't quite have the the um, the input that had been contemplated when we first had the discussion.
Yeah, Chancellor, may I respond to that?
Uh, yes, thank you, Lee, please do.
Uh, Trustee Brown, I I definitely hear your concern and I do have Chris Brown's uh information and I I just apologize to you for not having a chance to reach out to him yet. Uh, we did get pushed back a little bit um from where we were hoping to be frankly at this point in time, but I have not forgotten, forgotten that that was a specific request uh to include external um community input as well. So we'll, we'll definitely try to make that happen. Uh, it may be challenging given how we're meeting, but you know, certainly phone calls and video meetings, if we need to, can be part of the process. Uh, and I think at some point, uh, we talked about convening either in workshop format or through a task force, uh, kind of a wider, uh, trying to cast a wider net, if you will. Uh, so we've, we've made good progress internally, but admittedly have not had a chance to uh do all the outreach to external groups as was suggested and we will get on that.
Thank you for that. Uh, Trustee Handy. Any comments?
Okay, no, I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Witherer.
There we go. Um, I have no real comments other than the fact that it was a good report and um, I'd like to have this kind of a report more on a uh periodic basis than um, once or twice a year. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Trustee Weinstein.
Um, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I um, I really enjoyed this presentation. I feel like uh things are moving along and I feel good about it. Um, there was one thing that you had mentioned about some of the students didn't know the uh number to contact for emergency services. Uh, and I I somehow remember um Dr. Gilkerson, maybe last year, talking about having that number put on the ID. And I'm just wondering if there's some way that we can, you can do something so that that number is easily available for students, because we really do want them to be able to contact um emergency services. Um, and the other thing is, uh, you know, I pay attention, as I'm sure everybody does, to the Clary Act. Uh, and I'm just wondering if if um, we've been able to do any additional work in terms of um education for our students uh around sexual assault, uh, sexual harassment issues. Thank you.
Uh, Trustee Weinstein, we will look into what we can do about getting that number out there a little bit more commonly. I think we need to kind of double down on how we might um, you know, get some of those messages out. And with regard to the Clary Act, we definitely, uh, that report is due in October and we'll be prepared to report out to you. Um, I can't say that we've taken any concrete steps in terms of, that I'm aware of anyway, about educating about sexual violence, uh, but um, I don't know. Lieutenant Verbeck, are you aware of any programs that we might look into?
So in um, part of the Let's Talk is, we also talk about that kind of stuff. We talk about not only uh awareness to your surroundings and and what, but we also talk about what to do if something does happen. We also let uh the students and and faculty and staff all know that show up to those meetings that there are ways to report stuff without people knowing, you know? Obviously, uh, if you feel you're in fear of somebody, uh, when you come to school and get away from that said person, there's ways to get ahold of us and tell us what's going on. So we do make that very clear. Um, there's ways to get ahold of the police without having a police officer come to you and make a a scene, in in other words, um, police cars and everything else, right? So we let them know there's ways to contact us privately, um, through either meeting us uh at our office, just seeing us on campus, or I always let everybody know exactly where my office is, which is pretty, pretty discreet location, um, that if they get to, uh, they shouldn't be followed or anything else by anybody. So we do get that option and and I know that you mentioned that before, that the numbers were low and and whatnot. We're trying to get information out to people that, hey, if you're a victim of any of these type crimes, you need to let us know. Um, so we're working on that.
Okay, thank you. And 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 maybe you can do, um, you can show us at the next um presentation, kind of specifically what perhaps workshops that you've done or what ways that you, you know, because I'd like it to be uh more methodical in a way so that, so that I feel as if everybody has an opportunity to learn about it, even if they don't use it, at least be educated about it. And it sounds like that's what you're doing, but I'd just like a little bit more of it.
Right, copy.
Thank you.
Uh, Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you very much and thank you for the presentation. Um, could um, somebody in the administration remind the board, when is the 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 sheriff's contract uh renewing or when 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 will that year come up?
So our contract with the Alameda County Sheriff expires on June thirtieth of this year, so we have about three months.
All right. And so was last June or thereabout that the board basically said, we're, we're done with this, we're not renewing? Um, is that, is that correct?
Uh, I believe it was the second meeting in May, uh, where the board rejected the contract and then uh subsequently the changes.
So coming on up to a year now and um, what I'm trying to figure out is, I'm like, I'm, I'm seeing a report, I'm seeing a survey that's twenty seventeen. Um, it seemed to me that the board was asking for a pretty robust analysis of our security services. And the board's concern was big enough that, in fact, a majority of the board said, you know what, we're not renewing. We've asked for this numerous times and we're not getting it. And so now here we're in April and I understand the COVID thing is, you know, it's kind of slowed everybody down a bit, but it's still, you know, it's only, that's only the last month or so. And you know, uh, Vice Chancellor, I'm not trying to lay blame at your feet or anybody's feet in particular, but I think what the board was looking for was a pretty serious reanalysis of the need that the district has and then the services that we're getting. Um, in particular, I think a number of us had concerns um about the uh questions of cultural context, et cetera, that weren't addressed in this survey and then apparently there wasn't enough urgency last May to get it going so that sooner rather than later, we could look at this. And in fact, And in fact, it seems to me that the board extended the contract with this specific question, well, could we cancel this contract? What, what, if, if in fact, the board didn't renew it, what would happen? And then there was this question about how much notice we would give. And so there was a fair amount of urgency. And so what I'm not seeing reflected in this report is that urgency. Um, I'm seeing a lot of aspiration. And again, I, you know, I fully realize, in fact, I probably don't fully realize, but I do realize that, that everybody's hands are full. And even before the COVID crisis, people's hands were full. You know, you've got a billion dollars of bond money, you're trying to figure out how to spend appropriately, et cetera. So I, I get that, but it seems to me that this is an issue that, uh, almost a year ago had so much urgency to it that this board took the unprecedented step of not renewing. And so I want to remind our administration of that moment so that when we get to June, we're not in that moment again. We're not in a place where we haven't looked at the alternatives, we haven't assessed the needs, we haven't done the involvement of our shared governance processes and in particular our students, um, and then other members of our community. So if I can just remind people that's where we were and pray that that's not where we're going to be in May, which is a month off. So how the administration is now going to respond to that? I don't know. Um, but it seems to me that it's now maybe too late to do it appropriately. But I, I, so we'll see what happens in a month. I know I myself am not going to be particularly excited about renewing contract under these conditions, um, with, without a, a much deeper analysis. So thank you very much for your work and I wish you luck on the next step of it. Cause I don't know how you can get it done in between now and when it needs to be renewed, frankly. Just given where you are right now, I've, I got my doubts. So, um, I, I don't mean to be naysayer, but, mm, okay.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. We'll, we'll do the best we can.
You're welcome and thank you very much, uh, Vice Chancellor.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Reese.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for the information that you have in front of us. Um, the, the, and I don't know if this is a question that you can answer because I think that Trustee UN Gonzalez had actually brought up some very important points. Um, and we are going to be against the timeline yet again. So even though you can't do the specifics, um, I would like to know, is there anything that can be done, um, relevant to his comments between now and when we're going to have to affirm or validate that contract yet again in June?
Well, I think, um, we laid out a couple of organizations that we need to meet with. So that outreach is ongoing, um, and you know, we'll certainly follow up. I think the question that I'm gonna, at the risk of interpreting Trustee Gonzalez, she went's comments is that, uh, you know, there were comments made last year about how much, um, should we have in the way of post-trained officers? I think that was one of the questions that we wanted to be, you know, that was requested that we analyzed. And I guess, you know, my only response at this point is that some of the data that I haven't shared with you is in informal qualitative information that I did receive from, again, Dean Diana Chang, who did share with me that actually this COVID issue, and even prior to this, actually dating back to an informal, um, survey that was done in 2019 of Asian American students, in particular at Laney, have actually requested a greater police presence because they're afraid of some of the harassment that they've been receiving. So the fine line that we're walking is to balance those two needs of those students who feel rightfully so, uh, perhaps triggered response because they may have been young men or teenagers who were arrested or harassed by the police. And, and some other students who feel that more security is needed because they're being harassed by, uh, other, perhaps other students or maybe just community members, um, because of their race. And so I acknowledge that we need to get active and try to get an answer for you as a board. I hear your concerns and I apologize for not being further along at this point in time. But we are trying to balance a pretty disparate set of requests. Uh, and then talking about the entire community, you know, we've actually received some good feedback about some of the actions that the Alameda County Sheriffs have done, that they've been much more active on foot and attending student events and riding bicycles and things like that to really try to create, um, less of a militarized feel. Uh, and at the same time, we've also heard from some of the homeowners up in the Oakland Hills, like at Merritt College specifically, that they, they would like to see more police presence because of some of the public events that happen there. So, you know, I think that every college in this wonderful county is very different and unique. And so we're trying to find the balancing act that recognizes kind of both sides of that same coin. So we take it seriously and again, I apologize for not being further along. And we have a lot of ground to make up, as has been pointed out, and we'll do the best we can in the coming month.
And, and lastly, my second question would be, how long will that contract be for? Um, preliminarily at least, will it be for the three year, are, are they usually two or three year contracts? Can't remember, I know that we, we expedited or we shortened the last one, uh, but they're normally for three years?
Yes, typically they have been a three-year contract with two one-year extensions, which is a format that we've brought to you for several different types of contracts. I think that would be the ideal condition from the Sheriff's County, uh, Alameda County Sheriff's Office, but of course, you know, we can, we can work with the board on other options if that wasn't acceptable.
Okay.
Thank you. I also have, uh, Trustee Brown.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I think that we have to do some analysis regarding how we undertook this process. Our trustee, uh, Student Trustee Contreras, uh, and Student Trustee Jordan were both willing to help work with the, um, district to convene, uh, small groups where students could have their privacy and talk about issues that they had encountered. Um, we had the momentum, we had the willingness and the support. I provided, um, personal references and people that deal with mental health and, um, responses. And that was, um, several months ago. And I think that we have to consider the fact that, um, we, we, I think we have to consider the fact that, that this, that it, we have to work collaboratively, collectively. It's not, it wasn't for a lack of availability of community support. And I think that we tend to let those things go too easily. And it's not just a staff issue. I think we have to collectively through as a governance body, a governing body and, um, an administrative team, pay more attention to the community voice and actually take those matters seriously because we're, we are in a similar, um, circumstance that we were before, but it was not, the, the board's refusal to review, to renew the contract until we had those, um, five items included was not just a, um, a punitive or penalizing thing. It was done with the offer of support. And there were people offering their time and their own, um, resources to bring about a, um, more productive end. So I think that, um, we have to look at how we allowed this to happen another, uh, uh, a third time and acknowledge the fact that there were offers made to convene meetings. There were people ready to, uh, work collaboratively. And, um, if those offers of support and involvement go unheeded, we will not be able to move the ball. And it, the governance, uh, aspect of, of the district should not be ignored so completely as it was in this instance. Um, student trustees, um, my own personal references, um, don't appear to be important in any way until it comes time to contract review, I mean, contract approval. And that's what prompted the action the last time. So in order for us to move forward, we're going to have to take each other more seriously and be more collaborative.
Thank you, Trustee, um, Brown. Uh, Trustee Gonzalez.
Um, Vice Chancellor Sata, you, you made a comment, um, just now that I want to try to respond to. And that was that we've got varying community needs, that there are some people who feel like they need a stronger police presence. And I, I'm not disputing that. I, I think the question is, is whether that police presence needs to have a gun, needs to have armed officers. What is the appropriate police presence that's needed? My guess is, you know, we, we had a, as I understand it, we had a sexual assault on the Laney campus this year. And I know some people will say, well, there, that proves that we need more sheriff's presence. But I'm thinking, well, okay, that's a horrible thing to happen, a sexual assault. But my guess is that any public presence, any police presence, any security presence would have deterred or, uh, interrupted that sexual assault. My guess is that any security presence would deter, uh, the kinds of, uh, threats or assaults, et cetera, that you're saying some students are experiencing. And so the analysis is here is not police or no police, security or no security. That, that's a false dichotomy. I think the question here is the Alameda County Sheriff's Department and/or what else? And that's the analysis that I think needs to be done. And unless we actually engage people within our community in not a panic-driven, oh my God, we need people with guns here to protect us, but a thoughtful, engaged discussion of what are our security needs? How might those be met? What's fear versus reality, et cetera? I think until we do that, we're not going to have an intelligent response. And I, I wanted to say, you know, if the administration comes back in June or May with this and puts the board in the same position we were at a year ago, that that would be a horribly, uh, irresponsible thing to do, to put the board in that position again, when the board direction was absolutely clear. This is not a board failure unless the boards now says, well, I guess here we are again. We have to do it again because we've got the gun to our head. So I, again, let's not dichotomize into a gun or nothing. I, I, please, let, let's have a more thoughtful response. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. Um, I don't see any other speakers. Madam Clerk? I don't know if there are any other hands raised. Seeing none, um, I also want to thank both Lieutenant Burbek and, uh, and V.C. Sata for this presentation. Um, I also want to, um, echo, uh, with my fellow trustees that although there have been some headway made in this, um, bringing back information to the board, um, it, 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 it definitely is not, um, complete with the analysis, um, that we had asked for, um, now almost a year ago, for this specific issue and years prior. So this is a reoccurring issue that has come up again and again and again. And, and I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that, um, that the Chancellor, I, I think you're, I think I hear you, um, making some, making some movement there. Um, so there, there was a robust conversation with the trustees, um, and the administration over a year ago, um, and I would say years prior. Um, so we want to make sure that, as, as, as trustee reminded all of us, that we're, that we're being cognizant of the collaborativeness that, um, and in the spirit of community that the trustees, um, had, had actually put forward, a, a generous amount of effort, um, to be able to support, um, the administration's ability to have a much deeper analysis, um, through thought partnership, around our security needs and analyzing those needs. Um, there's a tremendous amount of resources that goes into our, um, multi-layered, kind of hybrid security, um, um, process that we have on campus. And so we, we, we're, we're serious about this and we really, um, want to work and support, you Chancellor and the administration. But, but this is a long, ongoing conversation. And I'll leave it at that and turn it over to you, Chancellor.
Okay, thank you, uh, Trustee Bonilla. Yeah, I was just, uh, um, sorry about being on, on unmuted. I was just mumbling, trying to figure out what analysis we were talking about, but I'll follow up with you that, uh, it sounds like there's some discussion that, you know, took place beforehand that I, um, you know, wasn't aware of. But I'll follow up with you and try to, um, get some clarity on that and make sure that you get what you need.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
We will move to the first reading. What do we have before us? First reading of board policies. This is an informational item. Um, and it's just a first reading. Uh, do you need us to, um, make a motion to accept it as informational item? What are we doing with this piece?
Give me one second here. Okay. Uh, no, trustees, um, Bonilla, this is just the, uh, first reading because the process is that the board has a first reading and a second action, uh, whenever the board policies are being changed.
That's right. Um, and I would ask that the, thank you for reminding me. And I would ask that the board, um, actually open up the, um, board policy, uh, mission. There is a significant, uh, change, um, to the mission and it would be good to review. Uh, it'll take you about 10 to 15 seconds to read it.
Yes, um, hold on one second.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Withrow.
I, um, I have no heartburn with the actual words, but it would appear that, um, we have one sentence that we're supposed to review per the ACCJAC every year. And, um, I looked at, uh, seven websites of, uh, fellow community college districts. And, um, most of them are much more extensive in terms of a mission, a vision, and basic goals of the, the community college district. And, um, what we're called upon to do here, granted, there's a whole bunch of people reviewing it and whatever, is a one sentence that quite frankly, comes across to me that they don't see a whole lot of, uh, value in articulating a mission. I don't have any, I'm not going to sit, sit here and roll out a whole bunch of things of what I should, think should be in the mission statement, but, um, it looks awfully, awfully slim to me. And again, just it, it comes across that, um, we, we don't, we don't value a mission statement very highly. And again, just it comes across that we don't, we don't value a mission statement very highly.
Excuse me, Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
This particular item, you are considering a mission statement at a later item, and when you consider the mission statement at the later item, then it would compel the change in your board policy. And so this particular item would be the change in the board policy. So it perhaps would be appropriate for the mission statement item to be taken up first. In this particular item, it's just a reading, so it's letting you know that if you change the mission statement later, your board policy change would look like this. That's all. Is that clear?
I understand it, that's right.
Yeah. So, so what I'm trying to say is, this item is just a first reading of, later on in this same meeting, you're going to consider a mission statement, the one that Trustee Withrow was just talking about. If you consider that a change in the mission statement, let's say the board votes and changes the mission statement, then your board policy that reflects the mission statement has to change. This is the first reading to show you how your board policy will change if you accept the other missions, the mission statement item that's later in this agenda. Let's say you don't vote for that mission statement, then your board policy would not change, and because this is a first reading, you haven't acted to change the board policy. Does that make sense?
It does, except that the mission statement that is in further down on the agenda is exactly the same thing that we're looking at in our board policy.
Right. And so further on the agenda, if you act on that mission statement, then this serves as the first reading for how the policy will change. If you act on that mission statement and you don't accept it, let's say it fails, then the board policy will not come back to you for action.
But you also, right, we also have 5.2 in consent, so it's not an action item.
Got it.
Which, which would normally be the place where we would have the discussion, so.
Got it, I understand.
That was my error. That was my error. I moved 4.1, which was incorrect. I apologize.
Oh, you moved 4.1 to action?
Yeah, 4.1 is an informational item, and what I should have moved was the item down further into this consent calendar.
Which is 5.2.
Yes.
Yes. So.
That's my fault.
Can we, can we adjust and remove, and move 5.2 into action? Leave 4.1 where it is.
Thank you.
I'm still not really sure how that changes everything, but, you know. But, okay. So I have, I have a number of trustees who want to speak. So, Trustee Withrow, thank you for your comment. I will move to Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I'd like to echo what Bill just said, and, and part of it is just trying to understand context, like, why are we doing this, at whose initiative, what was the process, and thinking, I'd actually like to just kick this off the agenda right now, or vote it down, and then really have a much more robust discussion of, in fact, what our mission is. I think Bill's absolutely right. This makes it look as though we don't really care about what our mission is, or we're going to just put it into one sentence and then not have a whole lot of thought behind it. I'm sure somebody had a lot of thinking behind the elimination of most of this statement, but I'd like to understand what that thinking is. And frankly, there are so many things that we're cutting out of the mission statement as it stands that I'm perplexed. So in the absence of any context, I, I'm not supportive of this revision. Maybe somebody can enlighten the board as to why this revision is, makes better sense than, than the existing mission statement. But frankly, I, I think maybe this is something we could put on a board retreat discussion, like, what are we in fact about? Anyway, so I'll stop.
Okay. Thank you. And just to remind everyone, so we still are on the informational item, 4.1. We have not gotten to 5.2, which is an action item, so we're on 4.1. Trustee Brown? Sometimes it takes a minute. Trustee Handy?
No comment.
Trustee Weinstein?
I would just basically agree both with Bill and Nikki. I read it, and I thought there was a lot more that we probably would want included in it, and so maybe we can find another time to, to discuss it. As it is, it seems too skinny.
Thank you. Trustee Reese?
On some level, I understand why we would want to reduce it to one sentence, because I know that with many colleges and many districts, they want the mission statement to be something that is easily memorable, so that it becomes kind of this, this dynamic manifesto for all aspects of a district and institution. So I understand that. As I, as I look at this, though, I do agree with my colleagues in the sense that it seems to extract quite a few other important details. And as I look at the quality education, and I agree, I agree with what's before and after, but as I look at the quality education, I don't see excellent education. I don't see the ways in which we want to prepare our students for transfer or for employment. I just see quality education rooted in equity, social justice, and partnerships, of course, but quality is the only adjective for education. And I think that as an educational institution with incredible faculty and curriculum and such, we need to highlight more than just quality in education, but be much more robust about it. But again, to be dealt with in a longer conversation at another time.
Thank you for that. We will move to consent calendar. May I have a motion?
Send it.
Moved by Trustee Reese, and a second by?
Second.
Second by Trustee Withrow. We will have roll call, please. Do I not see, do I not see Brenda on here?
She's on. Are we waiting for roll call on the consent calendar?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
There she is. We're going to do roll call. Madam Clerk on?
Yeah, sorry. I was having some technical difficulties there. Okay, Student Trustee Contreras, do we have on the line?
Yes, Amy. What's the phone for?
Student Trustee Stanley?
No.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
I'll be waiting for it.
Trustee Brown?
I'll stay there.
Okay, I'll get back to her. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
I'd like just some clarification. Item 5.1, that's the contract ratification, that's still part of consent?
Yes, it is.
That, okay. I'm, I'm going to vote yes, but I want to point out that the contract ratification list, we need the names of all of the vendors, the specific vendors, so that we can avoid any conflict of interest. In past, when we've had independent contracts that were brought to the board, in addition to the name of the country, company, the name of the principal vendor, principal owner was always included, and that was specifically so that we could avoid any conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
I think I already said yes, or I thought I said yes.
Thank you. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla? Thank you. And do we have Trustee Brown? Just checking in on Trustee Brown.
Yeah, I was just unmuted. I was just unmuted, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead, and we're back to our action calendar. We'll take 5.2, which is the consider approval of PCCD mission statement. And I need a motion.
Send it.
It's been moved by Trustee Reese, and second by? Second by Trustee Weinstein. Thank you. Discussion.
I can't support it.
We can go straight to roll call if there's no discussion. We had a pretty robust discussion, so we can go to roll call unless someone has a burning desire to say something. We're still, where are we right now? 5.2, which is the mission statement that was pulled into action.
Thank you.
Okay. So we can do a roll call vote.
Thank you. And checking to see if we have any of the student trustees on the line. Student Trustee Contreras? Student Trustee Stanley? We'll start with Trustee Withrow then?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I think we could work on this a little bit more. Wasn't this just the first reading? I mean, we, we haven't really, well, I think we could work on this a little bit.
Yeah, no, Trustee Brown, just for clarification, we read the BP board policy as a first reading, and then there was an action item, which is what we're on right now, which is separate from the first reading of the BP.
Yeah, I meant, yeah, the, this mission statement, I think we could work on a little bit more. So I would say, no, let's defer this, do a little bit more working on it, and then revisit it.
So that's a no?
Yeah, that would be a no with the, with the idea that we can do a little bit better, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Bonilla?
No.
Thank you. Motion fails.
Okay, thank you. We will move to action item 8.1. Approval of personnel items. It was moved into action by Trustee Gonzalez. You win. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Send it.
It's been moved by Trustee Reese, second by?
Withrow.
Trustee Withrow, thank you. Discussion. Trustee Gonzalez?
I've made my position on this clear over numerous readings of these items, and I'm ready to proceed to vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Being no, seeing no more discussion, roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
With no prejudice towards any of the candidates, no.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Um, yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And, thank you. And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We are now on action item 9.1, Consider Approval of Resolution 19/20-38, authorizing the issuance of the sale of general obligation bonds of the district under its 2006 authorization, Measure A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $65 million, and under its 2018 authorization, Measure G, in aggregate principal not to exceed $50 million, and approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more paying agents' bond purchase agreements, continuing disclosure certificates, official statements, and compliance guidance, guidelines for such bonds. Motion to approve, please.
No more.
Moved by Trustee Withrow, second by?
Brown.
Second by Trustee Brown, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none? Discussion yes, discussion no? You'll all let me know when we do roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 9.2, Consider Approval of Resolution Number 19/20-43, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, refunding bonds of the district in an aggregate amount not to exceed 25 million, and approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more paying agents' bond purchase agreements, continuing disclosure certificates, official statements, and escrow agreements for said refunding bonds. May I have a motion to approve, please?
No more.
Moved by Trustee Withrow, and second by? Second by Trustee Handy, or I'm sorry, Trustee Brown?
Yeah, that's me, I guess.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to item 9.3, Consider Approval of Resolution 19/20-44, accepting the OPEB 2019 GASP Actuarial Report, July 2019 OPEB Supplemental Actuarial Report, and the June 2019 Investment Performance Update and adopting the OPEB Trust One Surplus Determination and Disbursement Procedures. May I have a motion, please?
Send it.
Send it by Trustee Reese, second by Trustee Gonzalez. Discussion.
Madam President, I am going to support this item, but I have concerns with respect to a lot of uh with respect to a lot of the issues that are raised that uh would be difficult to justify in a court proceeding. This whole area is very legalistic. Uh, a lot of the laws that apply to me, I was just a general finance business guy, uh are not real clear. Uh, then some of them tend to can uh conflict with each other. But um, I'm still gonna support it because um the downside of not supporting it and not having a structure that uh our chancellor has gone to a great deal of effort to put together here would not be good, would not be good. It um, it's, it is a military guy with um four combat tours on my belt. This is what we would call very significant um collateral damage.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Um, madam clerk, can you help trustee Brown?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
I think that we need to uh, let, let me say this, there's been quite a bit of effort um to bring us from where we were two years ago. Um, Romaniere Johnson, when she was vice chancellor, began developing a process where there would be money put aside um and, and um uh budgeted for paying the um debt on the OPEB bond. And that structure was reported in budget meetings at the time. This resolution um goes further in memorializing the process that will be, uh the mechanism that'll be followed, the process for calculating what the um, the budget will be or how you'll budget or set aside the funds for the paying the, the debt service. The one thing I would suggest is that we, instead of having a um, putting the money aside a year in advance uh based upon a um market performance report that's not revisited um during that, that whole uh eight to twelve month period, that we add one final piece where we could check the performance of the um OPEB investments. So that right before we make these payments, we have at least a three to four months that we could do a check in, so that if there's been an adjustment in the um, in either the performance of the, the, the trust or the demand for the uh health benefit payment, that we're able to see that we're still on track to have the fund to pay the debt service, to retire the debt at the end of the maturity date for the bond. Um, when we were in our um training session, I made that suggestion. The uh, our consultants thought it was a great idea, but they had not thought of it. And so they said, they asked me how I would do that. Um, and I think that that needs, it needs a little bit more review. So I would say that I would support this resolution with the idea that we need to refine it just a bit more because history would not be kind, I think, to our decision-making process if we don't build in a check in, given that we're on the precipice of a new normal regarding um healthcare and regarding um the market performance for the next um year or so. And I have heard uh discussions about the board making a decision to refinance the OPEB debt, uh OPEB bonds um and uh not uh make some difficult um decisions that might have been in hindsight uh better for us. And I think that it would be a similar action to not build in a check in period, particularly since the market performance that we have and the demand on the trust will, will have been a year old by the time we're making the payment. So we need to refine it a little bit more. But we could adopt the resolution with the understanding that the mechanism should be tweaked just a bit, and we could revisit it later, but we could at least be able to go forward with a plan that has been put in writing so that we can uh make sure that we have something in place to cover the debt this time. So that's, that's my um suggestion. I'm not offering amendment at the time because it needs to be studied a bit more. And my training session was yesterday at three o'clock, so there was not sufficient time to have a deliberation on this matter and come up with a um adjustment. But I do think that it's not a um, it's not reasonable to not revisit um year-old uh documentation supporting your decision. I think we have to build in a, a periodic check so that we, we can make any adjustments that are necessary.
Thank you for that, um trustee Brown. Um, any other comments? Uh, seeing none, chancellor. Um, uh, given um what trustee Brown has um proposed, um which sounds like a periodic review um on the market performance of the um OPEB investments, um I, I would say that that is um something that we, we, we should definitely, that this board um anticipates that we will not have annual, but perhaps um quarterly or biannual uh report back to the board um on the market performance of the OPEB investments. Does that sound reasonable to you, chancellor?
Yes, trustee Bonia, we can do that.
Fantastic.
Or, or may I just add, and, and the demand, I don't know how well uh w- we can anticipate that it'll take a little, I'm hoping for universal healthcare. We'll just, let me just start out with that, but it's gonna take a few years before we get that in place. And in the meantime, there's gonna be a significant demand on our um, on the, on the uh trust to pay health benefits. That's my, just my outlook based upon where we are now. So I think it would be the performance, but also the demand. The algorithm of the actuarial report will be the same, but we will get a new one that's gonna tell us how we look um after this pandemic. And so I think we need to revisit um the calculations for retiring the debt service as well as the market performance. So it's a sort of a three hundred and sixty degree look, but there are only about three or four points that we need to hit in order to do that, that review.
Uh, trustee, trustee Bonia, trustee Brown, thank you. Um, and I'd like to, uh, we definitely can uh provide the reports, but I'd like to um also discuss uh what trustee Brown is proposing with the FAs and see, you know, h- um how and what we can do as it may imply um not only the check in, but may imply then changes in uh payment plans being done. So I wanna just make sure that we're on the right track. And we definitely can provide the um, definitely will, will provide the uh reports. We know that we'll need to partner with the retirement board to get that information on the investment performance.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, if there's no other discussion, we will take a roll call, please.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Fantastic. Uh, we will move to, thank you for that. We will move to um board of trustee reports. Um, trustee Brown?
Well, with um, it's, we're going into our third, I believe, webinar, trust with the, the Community College League of California. This one um is going to be on student equity, on um student services, and some of the things that the students were mentioning in public comment um and, and questions that, that have been raised regarding the availability of resources and food insecurity um and uh the gap in, in access to um technology as well as discrimination against students based on um, on race and the disenfranchisement and underserved uh communities that are being hit particularly hard by COVID nineteen, African Americans, people who um don't have jobs where they could work at home, people in service industry, those things are gonna be covered in this webinar. So it's on Thursday at noon. And um, I think that it would be great if um our students could uh listen to get the um information about resources that are available to them um as well as trustees, so that we know how we can work together to support our students. Uh, so for the next, um, I guess about five more weeks, that we'll have these webinars. Um, but that'll be Thursday at noon. So that's what I've been, you know, writing for that and uh gathering information to try and support us, our students during this time.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, trustee Handy?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Um, trustee Withrow?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez?
Uh, nothing, just stay safe, people, and thank you for those of you who are out doing the work. Thank you.
Definitely. Uh, trustee Weinstein? Is she on mute?
Yes.
Okay.
Over the dog.
Shh, go away. Um, so uh I, I um wanna thank people who um are in the hospital and the front lines. Boy, they're really, they're really hel- they're really helping us, and I appreciate it. And um, I did get a chance to speak with some undocumented students who said that they are still struggling with finances. Um, and I, I do hope that perhaps um our district or administration perhaps gives us a timeline on when money, when um money is actually in the hands of the students. I know some of them have already received it and some of them haven't. Um, but I think we need to um, um pay attention to that. Uh, I, I know they're, they're really struggling, as I'm sure a lot of other students are struggling. So thank you, and, and that's it. And Charlie says hello or goodbye.
Thank you. Trustee Reese?
Yes, just um another shout out to everybody on the front lines, everybody that's working in the hospital, um all of our doctors, all of our EMTs, nurses, practitioners. We have no idea what they're going through on a day by days, day by day, minute by minute basis. Um, all the people that are working in the grocery stores, our UPS and Amazon people, just the individuals that we forget to say thank you to. I think that we forget to recognize, just a public shout out.
Very nice. Thank you. I echo all of my colleagues um during these trying times. Um, and I just wanna let the students know that we are uh thinking about them constantly, missing our student trustees um and, and seeing their bright shiny faces um at our, at our meetings. I never thought I'd miss physically being at our, at the dais, at the dais um next to all of you. Um, we take so many things for granted. Uh, but I really appreciate um all of you on this call. And I will move us into announcements. BP Reese?
Right, we have two announcements. Um, first, if we could just take a moment of silence for Joe Doyle, our longtime Paralta member who passed away today. Um, if we could do that now?
Yes. Thank you.
Sure. And then our next regular board meeting will be held on April twenty-first at the district offices. And madam president, that concludes our evening and the announcements for tonight.
And uh, point of personal privilege, if we could close our meeting in honor of Joe Doyle tonight? I think the community would appreciate that.
I just did that. We just did that.
Yeah, no, I realize that, I'm just.
Okay, yes, one more, exactly.
And we will close this meeting um in honor of Joe Do- uh Doyle.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a, um, enjoy the rest of your evening, be safe, and we'll be talking soon.
Thank you.
Yes, good night, good night. Thank you.
Night.
Thank you.